Hi, how are you? Nice to meet you.
I'm consulting.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I see your name all over there. Who's this guy? I guess I'll see you in action.
Well, I don't know how much action it will be. There's one thing that was on the agenda, Clay Street.
Oh, that's not.
You guys requested it now, and it looks like it's going to postpone this thing for...
Okay, I'm not sitting on that one anyway.
Oh, you're okay.
My brother-in-law lives right across.
Oh, so you're one of the people that's conflicted about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My brother-in-law lives on Skyway Drive, right on the other side of your life.
Oh.
I'm staying away from that one.
I'm waiting. But there's other stuff that I've been working on.
Yeah, there was something else on the agenda. Something else you were looking at?
35 Orange.
Yes.
There's a good go.
Yeah.
There we go. Some other things on the agenda that didn't have to look at. Got some other problems, not related to such, like many of the public building.
Oh, I don't know.
From memories, like three or four of them.
Yeah, does that one still on?
It is. I'm aware of the folding alley. But I'm not, we're not done with that. The chicken's still in the upper stage.
I think so. I think we had, I think the latest notes, we hadn't gotten to anything. I think it came as part of the crisis that a lot of that was underground.
Yeah, the fire department has issues, circulation.
Yeah.
Safe circulation.
Okay.
Hey.
How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Another beautiful day in paradise.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Lovely in mind of the towards.
Had the opportunity to cut hedge, and you do a lot of one of the stuff.
It's a nice day, you know? We've been blessed with the whole week going.
Hey, how are you? I'm good.
Yeah, you're taking all this in, huh?
My job.
I'm good. We have the first daughter and granddaughter arriving today.
Yes, yes.
Is that where you guys are? I didn't realize. Yes. On the cannon there.
In a bear? Okay.
I think so, yeah.
Jerry, how are you?
Good.
Uh, fine, fine. Yeah. Yeah, good. Homework, homework, homework.
Yes.
Studying for the bar.
Well, that's good. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Needs that.
We all.
Yes.
Determined praise.
And apparently they're having a surfside crossing the same day to respond to plan.
Oh, I didn't know that. Your plans, your prepared comments were so.
Yeah.
I have two hundred comments that.
Are you?
Well, I don't know.
That's great.
Because I did a little review. Yeah, that would be very helpful for us.
Yeah.
So that, we're doing none on the 21st. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It might actually. We love it when you come up with a statement. Oh, okay. Looks like we're not having a meeting on the 21st.
I get it. And I still prefer the only place I could see.
Hello, good.
Don't understand.
What, your temperature's up? And ones on a specific. Especially, I mean, special.
But it's a special permit use of each subdivision, so I don't know why it doesn't cross reference that.
Oh.
Because I had a long line to search for where it made sense to me at one point.
Oh, good.
I didn't really understand the flag laws. This is. I didn't. So. Over certain side wanted to have up down.
Yeah. I think I'm going to do the 21st, 30. Going into very competitive. Select for 22 years.
Yep.
If people want to know if they're applying.
Yes, yes.
Pick turn. So it ends on June 30th. I'll come to that.
More stuff?
It's important.
I don't know a lot. I love the agenda.
Well, but you've got a lot of experience.
Hi, Holly.
Well, I just think those are very tricky.
I think there might be a couple of other.
It also seems to me, I don't know about this free reading, I said on dead end streets. And I don't know where the extension is going beyond that. But if that's the case, then it does. Because the idea there.
Yeah, but I understand a cul-de-sac. A cul-de-sac is at the end of the street. This is, you know, this is at least always depicted, almost depicted as a total court.
Thank you. Good to go to the door.
Hey, oh, poor.
Since your birthday.
Darling. Are you putting all of this in order where I need this?
Thank you.
Westmore.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the planning board this evening. Thank you for attending. It's always nice to have an audience. Just a few things I want to run through very quickly because there's been a few changes that have gone on at this point. So before we approve the agenda, in consent items, B A and R's, John Murray, that's going to continue to 7-9. Under previous plans, Linda Bellevue, that we're going to talk about, where we're not going to be hearing that, they would like to have that request removed, so we'll deal with that in short order. Going into the public hearings at this point, 35-18, Act Bowling, that's continued to 7-9. 36-18, Norman Fidel and Susan Fidel, that is continued to 6:21. Going a little further ahead, 8222, Clay Street subdivision, continued to 6:21. Okay, that's kind of the whole change in systems here. All right, so with that in mind, board members, I appreciate someone to make a motion for the agenda to approve it.
So will.
Do I hear a second? Motion's on main and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have ye unanimously. Catherine, minutes, June 7. We good there? So are there any hours or remissions in the minutes from June 7, 5? Not, I'd ask for someone to make a motion to approve. And motions on main and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have ye unanimously. That's going to bring us down to previous plans, 39-16, Old South Road Crossing. Is there someone here for the applicant? Lesu, Andrew, I.
Mr. Cohen is.
Oh, Mr. Cohen, good evening, sir. Take a second.
Yeah, there we go.
There we go.
Now he's here.
Good evening, sir.
So I'm just looking for a clarification regarding an existing special permit, MCD permit, where we want to do a design change to one of the buildings to add a basement and an exterior staircase. And my concern is that when we apply to the zoning officer, that he's going to say, go back to the planning board and see if that's okay with them first. And I'd like you to say that you don't think that we, you need to have any amendment because it's not changing the, it's not a material change to what's been approved.
Okay. Board members, did you have any questions at this point?
Yeah, hi. Jude, go ahead.
I just wanted to be sure I'm clear in understanding this. When you reference accessory use and mechanical use, you're also saying that the only accessory use is for storage, is that correct?
At this point, I think there would be a separate application that might be a change, or there is a separate application that would be a change of use that would be before you. But at the moment, that's a building that is permitted for retail use, and the application is only to add storage or mechanical for the retail use.
Okay, so where, in your letter, you say full basement for accessories slash storage and mechanical. Right now, you just mean storage, not other accessory types?
That's correct.
But you may come back for something else?
That's correct. Yeah, so that would be related to the approved retail use.
Thank you.
Anything else, board members? No. All right, so what's the pleasure of the board at the moment?
I'd move that the board issue a written confirmation to Mr. Cohen indicating that a proposed full basement used solely for accessory slash storage and mechanical purposes of lot three is permissible under existing file.
Okay. Can you do me a favor? Just pull those microphones a lot closer to you.
I'd ask for one clarification that includes an exterior staircase as well.
Is that part of your motion then, Jude? Thank you. And do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have ye unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, great. So that's going to bring us to our public hearings. I want to try something a little different tonight, so with your blessing, what I want to do is just open all the public hearings at once. Try to streamline things down, supposed to just doing it. So if you're all good with that, public hearings now open for all of the different projects that are before us tonight. So that's going to bring us to our first one, which is 8205, Top Lending Properties Modification.
Mr. Chair, I have to not participate because you've had two rounds on this already, right? And I've come.
Yeah, okay, so if you haven't, yeah.
Have you been too?
Yes. Yep, all right, thank you.
Okay, I'll sit up there.
Perfect. Was there someone supposed to? Holly, do you know who's? All right, so maybe we've done, there's nothing from Mr. Pesci either, is there?
Oh, sir.
No, all right, so let me put this back because I don't know where the applicant nor the lawyer is at the moment.
The applicant's here.
Yeah.
I don't know where Sarah is, but I'm here. I'm the applicant.
Okay.
This is for the top of Canada.
Yeah. Do you want to defer until she gets here?
No.
All right. Great, so we'll do that at the moment. Thank you.
Wait a minute. Can we defer?
We're going to, we're going to.
Wait until she comes.
Yeah, we're going to give her a few minutes because I, we really do kind of need to hear from them first.
In March, we had a hearing, and we asked to be the first on the agenda, and she would not allow it. Now, we're having to wait for her, and the same thing will happen that happened in March. It'll get to be too late to be off the island.
What time do you have to leave at, sir?
I'm supposed to be leaving at 7:05.
At what time?
Because I thought you were on first. 7:05.
7:05, all right, so I will keep that in mind.
Can you hear me?
Thank you. Yeah, please, when you come to the microphone too, please make sure you identify yourself and where you live for the, for the record. Thank you. All right, so that's going to bring us to 12-18, which is the Westmore Club, amendment number five, 10 Westmore Lane. Mr. Reed, good evening.
Thank you very much for the record attorney, Arthur Reed, representing the applicant, Westmore Club LLC. We've been before you previously on this matter. What we are doing is requesting the modification of the original special permit decision, which has been amended several times previously, but mostly not with regard to issues that we're raising now. This relates primarily to the original addendum A, which was attached to the decision with the various conditions under which the, at the time that the Westmore Club was originally being formed and permitted, it was proposed that the club would be operated. And as a result of issues that have come up, and as a result of the passage of time with the operations of the club, we decided to come back in, and you've heard this from us before, with a request that the provisions of the decision, particularly with regard to addendum A, be modified in various respects. Now, since we filed our original application, as to which there were some areas of confusion as to what we were asking for, and I believe we've cleared those up now, the club's general manager, Chris Colter, who is in his second year at the club, has worked extensively with neighbors. He's reached out to all the neighbors who, from whom we've heard anything. We've also reached out to all the neighbors, everyone on the abudders list, and sent them materials. And he's had quite a lot of dialogue with many of these people, most of whom have indicated their support, in some cases with some issues that they've raised in their letters, many of which you have. There are a number of them who sent correspondence in the last few days, too late to make your packet. But in any event, the proposal that we have now, and I think what we should do is just restate and discuss exactly what we're asking for at the present time with regard to the specifics. First of all, there's been question about the, about what constitutes a special event. The decision all along called for there to be eight special events per year. We're not changing that. We're not changing the number of special events from eight, but we're clarifying some aspects of it. The definition of special event would mean, and this is a amendment to paragraph 15 of the conditions in the original decision, a special event is to mean an outdoor event with amplified sound and/or a tent. Each such event shall take place in a single day and shall have a clear start and finish time. Per paragraph eight of addendum A, which we'll be getting to in a minute, the finish time of the music will be no later than 10:00 PM, and each special event shall be over by 11:00 PM. The total number of special events is limited to eight per year. See also paragraph eight of addendum A for matters involving the use of tents, which do not constitute special events. Then, as to addendum A, the differences between addendum A as originally in the decision and what we're proposing now are as follows. Originally, paragraph one provided that the inn would be open from, would be open 24 hours a day to serve overnight guests or members, open from May 1 to October 15, and for Thanksgiving, Christmas Stroll, Christmas and New Year's, clubhouse will be closed from January 2 through May 1. What we're now proposing is the clubhouse, including its dining, bar and lodging facilities, may be open from May 1 to October 15, and for Thanksgiving, Christmas Stroll, Christmas and New Year's. In addition, between April 15 and May 1, the club may be open to allow for a cocktail party for members inside the clubhouse on the last weekend of April, i.e. Daffodil Weekend. With respect to the lodging portion of the clubhouse, which we're defining as the inn, members and guests may stay overnight throughout the year without dining and bar facilities or any other guest services during the times of the year when the clubhouse is closed. Otherwise, the clubhouse will be closed from January 2 to May 1. Paragraph two of addendum A provided the restaurant in the clubhouse will be open from 7:00 AM through 11:00 PM, seven days a week when the club is open. The, that is now amended simply to add at the end of it and not outside those hours. This was all worked out in discussions that we had with one of the neighbors in terms of ways that the addendum could be modified to clear things up, and again, that doesn't add anything to what we're already allowed to do. Paragraph three, the fitness center will be open 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM year round, and we're now adding to that, and may open at 6:00 AM between October 15 and May 15. Fitness center is used by winter members, island residents primarily, during the off-season, and many of them work and have to get to work early and like to go to, to work out before they, before they go to their, to their job. So that's the only change in that paragraph. Paragraph four, the pool area will be open from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, except if the pool patio area is used for a club party or a wedding or charity event. The pool snack bar will be open from 11:00 AM through 2:30 PM. We're now proposing to modify that to, the first sentence stays the same, the pool area may be open from 8 to 6, except if the pool patio area is used for a club party or a wedding or charity event. The pool snack bar may be open from 7:30 AM through 6:00 PM and not outside those hours. The existing snack bar ventilation system shall be replaced with a new system designed to be as quiet as reasonably possible, not later than April 15, 2020. In other words, before the season after next. The point on this, and we may well be able to do it sooner than that, the point on this is that in discussion with neighbors, one of the issues that was raised was the noise from the vent. The vent in the clubhouse has been replaced and is in good order and is pretty much state of the art as far as noise is concerned. The one in the snack bar is noisy, and as soon as feasible, we do intend to replace that to improve the overall noise ambience in the area. The paragraph five, the tennis courts will, it originally provided tennis courts will operate from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM from May 1 to October 15. Previous modification, modification number five, allowed the tennis courts to operate from 7:00 AM. So now what we're saying is the tennis courts will. I think there's a typo in here. The tennis courts will operate from 7:00 AM through Christmas.
Or 8:00 AM. Just what is it? Okay, we're not looking to change that, it's just the addition of keeping one of the tennis courts open. one of the tennis courts open from, uh...
Okay. So the tennis courts will operate from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM from May 1 to October 15. One tennis court located to the west of the wellness center may remain open after October 15 through the first week of December between the hours of 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM. The point on that being that some members who remain on the island want to be able to use the tennis court through the fall, and we think that the use of the tennis court in that location at that time of year will not be a nuisance to anyone. The croquet and putting green in the original decision will be open from 8:00 AM through 9:00 PM, natural daylight permitting. There are no artificial lights on these areas except for the low ground cover garden-type lights as previously discussed. That language stays the same, that's not being changed. Paragraph seven, "The paddle tennis will be available from 8:00 AM through 6:00 PM May 1 through October 15, and from 8:00 AM through 9:00 PM from October 15 through May 1." Again, that remains unchanged.
Can we go to the changes?
Well, I just wanted to let you know that there are parts of it that have not changed.
No, I understand, but...
I've given you, I think, paragraph by paragraph, and most of them, you know, most of them have some of the original language, and I think I've indicated what the changes are in it.
Okay.
Paragraph eight is completely rewritten. "Originally provided, the club parties and events such as weddings and charity events, which require a tent structure, will be limited to eight total per year. Music will be off by 10:00 PM and the party over by 11:00 PM. There will be two club parties, one in July and one in August or Labor Day. There will be weddings or charity events with two each in June, September and October, but not on consecutive weekends." What we now propose is to replace that with the following language. "The total number of special events," a special event being any outdoor event with amplified sound and/or a tent expresses, express, except as expressly here and exempted, in any year shall not exceed eight. Each special event shall take place in a single day and shall have a clear start and finish time. The finish time of the music shall be no later than 10:00 PM and each special event shall be over by 11:00 PM. Between July 1 and Labor Day in any year, there may be a total of two parties constituting special events and one charitable event for the benefit of Holidays for Heroes, as described below, which shall constitute a special event. There shall be no other special events between June 1 and Labor Day. Other special events may take place in June, September and October. There shall not be special events on any two consecutive weekends. The following exemptions and additional provisions shall be applicable." This is all new language. "Once per month between June and October, a small tent about 20 by 30 may be erected over the Bluestone Patio located to the east of the clubhouse because of weather conditions, provided that such tent shall not have any form of amplification of music or voice and may only be operated between 10:00 AM and 8:30 PM in any day. The use of such tent shall not constitute a special event, provided that if it does have amplification of music or voice or dancing or is occupied after 8:30 PM, it shall be deemed to constitute a special event, i.e. would be counted against the total of eight and the seasonal limitation of those." B, "The club may keep a tent, the children's tent, erected in an area adjacent to and to the east of the fitness center for children's programs, which shall be used solely for the children's camp program between the hours of 8:30 AM and 2:30 PM between June 1 and August 31 and not at any other time. If the children's tent is used for any other event, each such use will constitute a special event and will be counted as one of the eight permitted special events per year." Again, this is a tent that is erected over the area where the children's programs are taking place because obviously the weather is unpredictable and so on, and it's kept standing. On one, and item C, "On one occasion per year, when a tent has been erected for a special event, it may be kept standing and used for one charitable event for the benefit of Holidays for Heroes on the following day between the hours of 4:30 PM and 8:00 PM without music. This event, if held, shall be counted as one of the eight special events permitted in that year, so that only seven other special events shall be permitted. No such charitable event shall be held for the benefit of any organization other than Holidays for Heroes without prior approval from the planning board." And as I think most of you know, the club has hosted Holidays for Heroes annual event each year. The way that they've done it is to do it on the day after the club party, which has normally been in August, but in, but in any event would be the second of the club parties. They keep the tent up to the following day so that the very good work that is done by Holidays for Heroes can be supported by having an event, which is not a musical event, it's, it's, it's over by 8:00 PM and there's no music. But I think that's, that's a very important thing that we do on the island, and I think that it's something that the club, as a matter of, of its charitable outreach, wants to continue doing. Item nine is unchanged, there may be other club parties, and those club parties will be over by 11:00 PM. And we're adding a new paragraph 10. "The club shall provide the planning board, the police department and all persons who may from time to time request it a telephone number which may be called at any time in order to report any complaints of excessive noise or other violations of this addendum A, as hereby revised, but may be, as it may be revised in the future." We think that that would provide a good framework. We think that that is consistent with the club's needs and, and we, as I mentioned, been over it with neighbors, and for the, for the most part, we have support for all of that from the neighbors that we've reached out to. It's not, not unanimous, and I'm sure you'll hear something about that tonight, but we, and, and there may be some other questions that would be raised with regard to it. But we have reached out extensively to the neighbors, as I mentioned, and think that we have, as a result of that, reached a good solution. One of the neighbors particularly, who initially had contacted the board, Peter Hallie, has worked with us extensively on this, and a great deal of the language and clarifications that we've come up with on this are as a result of input from Mr. Hallie, who is now supportive of the, of our proposal. Thank you. Chris Colter, the general manager, is here with me to answer any questions, but that's where we are with it right now.
Great, thank you. Board members, any questions at this time?
No, I'd just like to thank Chris for following up on the, the violations. I believe there were 15 violations and reviewing them over the course of 2004. The 15, a lot of them were, there were enough where, noise complaints mostly. A couple of them were cleared up, noting that they were one minute past, so I can, I can see a few that really are forgivable. However, I do have a couple of concerns looking with the, the tent setup. If we're going to be setting up on a Friday and then breaking down on a Sunday, in order to prepare for an event that's going to be taking place mostly a full course of the day on Saturday, you know, actually stretching until 10 o'clock for amplified music and breakdown at 11 o'clock, are there any plans, and this is a concern, I think, reading with the neighbors, for any particular function being on a Friday night, like a rehearsal dinner or rehearsal cocktail hour, while the tent is being, you know, since it's been erected? And then maybe a send-off party on Sunday morning? So in essence, that one event turns into really three events?
Yes, I know that that was, I'm sorry, Chris Colter, general manager of the Westmore Club. So I think what the clarification is, because that was brought up quite a few times with the initial, what I would refer to as confusing application. So if that were to happen, which currently is not the issue, that would be, if, so let's say the Smith family had a welcome event on Friday, a wedding on Saturday and a brunch or send-off on Sunday, if that were the likely event to happen, those would be considered three events, and we couldn't do them because we're not allowed three events. So it wouldn't happen because that's not, as we've asked in the addendum and what has been approved previously, we're allowed two events in, two events in June, one each in July and August, two in September, two in October. So that could not and would not happen because we're not allowed to do that.
Well, not that it could, but if it did, and you've already got the events scheduled, and I see for 2018 you're not fully booked yet, but in the event you were fully booked and the events happened, it would be kind of too late to cancel any other ones. I'm just wondering how that would, how that would happen.
Well, I, I think I would take a step back and say that moving forward, as now I'm the general manager and, as I said at the last meeting, I inherited the events of last year, under the current rules and, and not beyond what we're asking for, we can't have three events. So it wouldn't happen, we couldn't book them. We could book two events in June, two events in September, two events in October. So it would be, it wouldn't be, it would be against the approval of the planning board to have three events, as you've defined them as a Friday night event, a Saturday event, a Sunday event.
And I don't want to make light of this, but I was thinking about an analogy to kind of best put this, and although I really appreciate the, the new direction that you're going in with you being hired and coming before, before us and trying to be fully transparent, I think of, you know, big sports programs, you know, NCAA football team where they've been in violation. It's tough to reward or go forward. What I'd really like to see is you following the special permit as was, as was written for a year, and then I'm not opposed to the changes that you've made, but I really would like to, instead of go forward and add on and make variations to this, I'm more inclined to see that you can follow the rules that were originally set, especially as the new director, and then upon that, I'd like to review next year and, and give you the changes. And it's just my, my thought, because new coaches come in and they're not forgiven for their school's past history.
Sure.
They're actually given scholarship or had, have scholarships taken away from them, so they're almost, you know, they're, they're not rewarded. In essence, they're really punished. And I don't want to punish, but I would like to see a consistency here. So that's just my, my personal thought, and I wanted to see, I wanted to listen to the, the public to see what they would think about that and, and what the changes you've made and see how these...
So can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
So I think what you'll see is that we've, that consciously we've already reduced the number of events, as you see in the, in the packet that I submitted to you. Also, I don't make as much as those NCAA Division One coaches.
I don't think we all...
Nothing has anything to do with it. But also that if you look at the schedule, we've already reduced down to three, possibly four, if we're allowed to have the Holidays for Heroes. So I think in, in counter to what you're saying is, we've, I've already consciously made an effort to reduce the, the number of events that we've had and go below what we're allowed, which has, I want to be careful how I say this, I mean, we've, we've turned down events because I feel that strongly that we need to show the town and the neighbors that we're serious about following the rules. So to, to, to kind of counter a little bit what you're saying, we've already reduced it to three, hopefully four, if we can include the Holidays for Heroes, which is half of what we are already approved to be able to have.
Great, thank you. I'd still like to hear from the neighbors and letters.
Sure, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you know that we're, we're far under what we, what we are allowed.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else on the board?
Couple, just a couple things, and then we can go to the public. No one else has anything? All right, just real quick on 8C. Can you just, Chris, this is for you, I think.
Let me get to 8C, sorry.
I read that about five times, and I think I have it figured out. So the Holidays for Heroes, because some of the letters refer to, like, you're adding an event.
Right.
With that.
Let me try, and I probably, we wrote it like three different times.
I, I, I know, but let me just ask this, just real, just to be clear. So the one event out of the eight that would be Holidays for Heroes is shutting down at 8 o'clock.
Yes.
Not the 10 and 11 breakdown.
Correct, absolutely.
So we've actually reduced one event, even though we're asking for it to be the following day, I get that part. You're trying to take advantage of the tent being there, and it's not free to do all that stuff, I get that. But as a concession, you're closing at 8 o'clock.
Correct, that event, if approved, would be on that Sunday and would run from 4:30, approximately 4:30, to no later than 8:00 PM.
Yeah, okay. And then the Bluestone thing, which now I understand completely about that, now that I've gone up there and figured it out. So the Bluestone Patio, you're saying is going to be shut down at 8:30, and if it exceeds 8:30, even if it was 9 o'clock, that counts as against the eight?
Correct.
So if somebody, you know, potty goes wild and they, you know, can't get them out of the tent, suddenly this, this checks off an eight?
Or if it's a wedding for 60 people and they have a band and they have a dance floor and toast.
Yeah.
And that's under that tent, under the Bluestone Patio, that counts as one of the eight.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I hear what John's saying, I actually don't, and it's not even a question of disagreeing or not. I mean, I would look at this as, you know, this place has been, have there been any modifications since 2004?
Yes.
For, for this stuff or for other things?
Not for this, for other things.
Okay. I mean, I see this as, you know, I mean, figuring out what works, you've also extended the eight through the fall, correct? What was it before? Because I was looking for that. When did it end? When did the events end in the previous decision?
That's not changed.
Oh, it's not? Okay. So it always has been spread out through the fall?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and quite honestly, if you look at the math, we close Columbus Day, it's virtually impossible to have two events in October with, on consecutive weekends, because we're not open the third weekend, so.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So that almost eliminates one in October already.
I'm just, I just think that if every, I mean, I've read the new letters, if everybody understands exactly what you're asking for, it isn't as bad as it sounded originally. You know, there's a lot, there's a lot of, it's confusing to understand exactly what you're saying. So, anyway, okay.
Anyone else? No, sir?
Yep.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing's open at this point. If you've spoken beforehand, I'm just gonna ask you to please keep your comments brief. It's not, we usually record a lot of what goes on, so it's not necessary to really do a rehash on certain things, but we still would love to hear from you at this point. So if anyone... Mr. Farrell, come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Francis Farrell, I live at 4 West, my wife and I live at 4 Westmore Lane. I am not a...
Come a little closer to that.
Closer?
Yeah, because it picks up on the television as well, too.
Francis Farrell, 4 Westmore Lane. I am not a member of the Westmore Club. There's a lot of detail here. "The first act of this play is addendum A, which is the body of restrictions that presently govern the operation of the Westmore Club. While addendum A restricts the Westmore Club's operation, it does not restrict the Westmore Club's membership, which is permitted to grow and is growing. The point here, Mr. Chairman, is that regardless of the outcome of tonight's vote, as the membership of the Westmore Club grows, the burden of traffic, noise and safety to the neighborhood is already growing robustly." Key point. "Neighbors and abudders to the Westmore Club highly value the protections they receive from addendum A. Given the colliding interest between the neighborhood, whose residential density is intensifying, and the club, whose membership is growing, addendum A is more important today than ever. The neighborhood consensus wants you to keep A intact, as is." "The second act of this play is the, is an eight-point proposal to amend addendum A. Each and every one of these points aims to relax the restrictions of addendum A so that the Westmore Club can have more parties, longer hours of operation and a greater intensification of the use of club facilities." "Four of the proposals are relatively benign, whereas the other four represent a substantial detriment to the environment." The four proposals that appear to be relatively benign are: "To open the clubhouse early in the season, opening it, opening it at April 15, currently banned to not open until May 1st." "Second, to extend the use of a single tennis court to December 1st, currently all courts must close October 15th." "Three, to open the fitness center at 6:00 AM, which is currently restricted to 7:00 AM." "Four, to expand the hours of operation of..." to 7:00 A.M.; four, to expand the hours of operation of the pool snack bar to 7:30, starting at 7:30 and ending at 6:00 P.M., currently restricted 11:00 A.M. to 2:30 P.M. Those four are relatively benign. The next four proposals have an immediate and unfavorable impact on the neighborhood. Two of them involve an intensified use of the Westmore Club's clubhouse, which is a four-story, 17,000-plus-square-foot building perched on a high point and is visible for as far as the eye can see. Light and orders from it sweep, sounds can project for miles. Frequent and considerable heavy commercial traffic services this building, not to mention the ordinary daily user traffic. This building sits in the middle of our neighborhood. With that in mind, the four proposals that pose a substantial detriment to the neighborhood are: five, permit year-round accommodations at the clubhouse, currently banned between January 2 and May 1. This proposal effectively turns the clubhouse into a year-round hotel; six, permit five additional outdoor tented events. These events are in addition to the eight currently permitted to be held on the clubhouse patio, which is directly outside the club's indoor restaurant and bar. This proposal effectively merges the clubhouse patio with its restaurant and bar, which can serve hundreds of alcohol-enabled guests; seven, permit the erection of a children's tent to be in place for the entire summer. What decent person would argue against a proposal labeled "a children's tent"? In truth, Mr. Chairman, the vague language and gaping omissions at thoroughly restricting the use of this tent are questionable. Eight, raising the current two-outdoor-party limit to three-outdoor-parties between July and August. So, eight proposals to change the original rules of Addendum A. What to do? What's fair? What's equitable? What will be the effect on the neighborhood? Regarding fairness, this proposal is completely lopsided. It's all-take for the Westmore Club and no-give for the neighborhood. There is no benefit to the neighborhood, none. Regarding equity, the Westmore, the Westmore Club has knowingly and repeatedly violated Addendum A, specifically the number and frequency of outdoor events, the erection of a permanent tent, and the operation of their fitness center and pool snack bar. The more blunt description of these violations, Mr. Chairman, is that the Westmore Club cheated. They cheated you, they cheated me, and they betrayed the trust your predecessors gave them, all for a buck. The sad truth here is that to those who question or challenge my claims and may be asking themselves, if my claim of cheating is correct and so important to abutters, why aren't more abutters here now speaking up? Mr. Chairman, it's because abutters are uninformed. They're not aware of Addendum A. Abutters see and hear and are impacted, for example, by another outdoor event or experience greater traffic because the pool snack bar is opened earlier than permitted, but they don't know whether it's permissible or not. There's no measuring mechanism here. Neighbors learned of the now-known violations only by accident, when in 2016, it seemed the Westmore Club was exceeding their outdoor events, and so in 2017, the neighborhood actively watched and measured. Mr. Chairman, I do not wish to rebuke anyone, much less in a public forum. I'm here to defend myself and family and with righteous indignation, point out the audacity of this proposal. Thus, on an equity basis owing to their many inconsistent violations of Addendum A, the Westmore Club does not deserve any favorable treatment or relief. Mr. Chairman, I invite you and the board to come to the neighborhood in the early hours of the morning to see the long stream of daily traffic of children being delivered to their scheduled swimming and tennis clinics. I also invite you to come in here and witness the Westmore Club's outdoor events, where one event consumes not one, but three days of neighborhood enjoyment. And I invite you further to come at the dinner hour to witness yet another stream of traffic for the club's dinner guests. All of this activity is what is permissible under Addendum A, which the neighborhood willingly tolerates. It's our agreement. Act Two, on the other hand, adds to this already considerable burden the neighborhood absorbs. Its approval will be detrimental to the residential status growth. In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, for two independent and meaningful reasons, this motion should be denied. One, it's unfair, because all the benefits flow exclusively to the Westmore Club, while all of its unfavorable consequences flow entirely to the neighborhood. Two, it's undeserved. If any one of us wants a raise and goes to our boss asking for one, we all need, we all know we need to make a pitch that our work performance is worthy of a raise, right? May I ask respectfully, has the applicant's performance been worthy? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing a comment?
Good evening. I'm Virginia Chase, 117 Westchester Street. I've lived there for 44 years, and I want to say that Westmore was a good neighbor until they got a sound system with amplified music. I find most of the objection from the abutters around me is about the noise. And this sound system is operating at the snack bar on the short hours now that they have, and it, it's like a special event, because it's an outdoor event with amplified music. It's loud, and it goes, and there is more amplified noise from the tennis courts, and it goes on all day. I mean, you expect noise from a tennis club. The children are in the pool laughing and jumping around, you know, you can hear the tennis players talking, but the music and the noise is way too loud for a residential neighborhood. And let's see. We, I have talked to Mr. Coulter, and he's saying that he will cooperate with the abutters and talk to us, and we can call him if we have problems, but he hasn't said he's going to restrict the amplified music during the day, which is what bothers me. The communication has been very good about this addendum, but, you know, once this goes through, if it goes through, we have no way to turn. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Chase, I'm just going to say one thing real quickly, if you don't mind. One of the things I love about special permits, okay, is that the planning board can go back to these things. So if the neighbors found they had a problem, they can come before the planning board and request to have a public hearing reopened, which is really what very few applicants want to have happen, and believe me, it can turn the other way as well, too. So I just want to assure you that there really is a mechanism in place under which to do.
The special events don't bother me.
Yeah.
I know that they're limited. What bothers me are the conditions every day that are like this.
And I understand that. Thank you. Go ahead.
Dear Planning Board, my name is Colin Sears. I have been coming here since I was two weeks old. I live at 104 Cliff Road, which is on the corner of Cliff and Westmore Lane. Today, I'm here on behalf of my parents, who are abutters to the Westmore Club and have submitted a letter for this meeting. My mother Tracy Sears addressed you at the May meeting, and she traveled here for each of the planned meetings since the canceled meeting in February. Unfortunately, she could not be here today. I'd like to highlight a brief few points from the most recent points made. The numerous provisions to the Westmore Club's original February submission have made it difficult to track exactly what they were asking and where it impacts our neighbors. In our letter, we sought to clarify the numerous requests and their impact on the neighbors and abutters and on the Westmore Club. We also tried to note where the club is acting in compliance with the special permit and where they are frequently not. In almost every request proposed by the club, an approval by the planning board would provide an asymmetric outcome favoring the economic benefit of the club at the expense of the neighbors' quiet enjoyment of their properties and indeed their property values as well. In the table inserted in our letter, we urge the planning board to decline any of the requests where, one, the Westmore Club is operating outside of the existing permit, and, two, where the impact on the neighbors is negative. Finally, and perhaps most disturbingly, is how easily, how very easily, the club seeks to rationalize away the existing noncompliance with the special permit. As a result of the club's request for an expansion of the permit, it has been forced to acknowledge that it is contravening the current permit. We request that the planning board require the club to comply with the terms of the 2004 special permit, yes, even where they have been operating in contravention, in contravention to what this very board has stipulated. We also ask that the planning board recognize that any potential expansions of the permit will no doubt encourage the club to continue to operate outside the terms of any permit. They have contravened already, and there is no reason to think that they won't be emboldened by a supporting vote to contravene again. We expect that all of the neighbors and abutters are grateful to the planning board for scrutinizing this issue so closely. We also recognize that the board's timed process of requesting neighbor and abutter feedback has, in this case, led to considerable negative feedback regarding the Westmore Club's request. The numerous letters suggest a concern that expanding the permit results in an asymmetric outcome, one that is good for the club and considerably worse for the neighbors. We also request that the board recognize the inherent conflict of interest of neighbors who have sent supporting letters and who are at the same time members of the Westmore Club. We urge you to reject the request for expansion of the special permit for three primary reasons: the impact on the neighbors' quiet enjoyment, that it does not apparently impact all neighbors, it certainly impacts many; in respect to the original agreement, which did not in any way contemplate the future expansion; and to ensure that the Westmore Club is not rewarded for intentionally and in often cases flagrantly flaunting the planning board's 2004 special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board members, anything else? Go ahead.
Just a question from the applicant, or to the applicant. One of the recurring themes that I've heard in the last few minutes is, deals with amplification in the children's tent and tennis courts. Could you elaborate on the circumstances under which amplification is used or needed in those two venues?
Yeah, I think to clarify, there is no amplification with the children's tent at all. No, we, I had the opportunity to meet with Mrs. Chase this morning, and we went over her concerns. The location of her home abuts two tennis courts, or four tennis courts, and I believe what has happened in the past is, when they, when we have had lessons for younger kids, the tennis pro uses music during that period of time with a battery-operated, like, CD player. So that was one concern. Her other concern was amplification in our pool area. We actually took a walk down there so she could hear, because the music was on today, and could hear that it wasn't that noise, that I firmly believe that it's the noise from the tennis courts. And she also was concerned about the noise created by landscape equipment that starts early in the morning. I immediately communicated to our tennis professional and our superintendent and copied Mrs. Chase on it, that under no circumstances, and I believe we've followed this in the past year under my leadership, that no, with the ordinance of 7:30 noise, that no powered vehicles or equipment is to start before 7:30. The rackettesque director is away until tomorrow, and he and I have a meeting tomorrow to make sure that there's no amplification on the tennis courts with music moving forward. And it hasn't happened yet, because we haven't opened yet for that, so.
And in terms of amplification in those, in these two venues, were they a part of the original agreement, or are they being, is that, is there a change in?
Well, I, so I can't, it does, the original addendum doesn't speak to amplification during the day. I'm assuming, with my limited knowledge, that previously, the club followed the noise ordinance, which allows no noise before 7:30 or after 10:00 P.M. One of the things, just to kind of loop around here, where Mr. Farrell said there was no benefit to this process, I think one of the greatest benefits is that we've had open dialogue with many of the members, whether it be Mrs. Chase or several other members, who originally sent in letters not supporting, but really where their concerns were, were not with what we were asking for, but with other concerns about amplification. I've had conversations with Mrs. Chase, I've had conversations and emails back and forth with several other neighbors, that we will address and make sure, and I know Mrs. Chase said that I said it, but didn't say, we won't have noise, and I don't know how you define the level of noise, that she has had in the past. We will eliminate music and, so, I don't know what the, the original addendum does not address amplification.
Would you be willing to restrict the amplification in the swimming pool? Give it up?
Well, I think that's, you're putting me on the spot, because I think even Mrs. Chase would, would hopefully agree that the music that she heard today, once we were about 30 feet away from the pool, you couldn't hear it. So I think that the concern, and then there's one speaker that faces towards Westmore Farm, and no one's ever complained about that. I think honestly, that the noise that Mrs. Chase hears and heard, and we talked about this, is the amplification of music that's being played on the tennis court that directly abuts her property, and that I am willing to take.
I'm only asking, because there's one other club that's got, or at least one other club that has a swimming pool, and I know there's no amplification at all in that swimming pool, and I'm not sure what the need for it is.
Well, so let's define amplification, what it is. Between our adult pool and our family pool, there is a snack bar called the Beach Plum. There is a porch that overhangs that. In that porch area, there's one speaker that plays music in that area. And if you were to walk, and I invite the board to come and listen, if you were to walk 20 feet away from that porch, you wouldn't hear it. So I think that the noise, I firmly believe that the noise that Mrs. Chase is hearing is not from the pool, it's from the amplified music being played on the tennis court, which we will stop. And I'm happy to have that in writing.
Okay, so is the answer to my original question about in the swimming pool is no?
Well, I think that's an unfair question, when I'm not sure whether that's, you know, I think there's more noise from 130 kids running around than there is from music. But I mean, if that's what it takes to do that, then I would absolutely have further dialogue with the planning board about that, but I would certainly want the planning board to come and hear the level of music and see if they feel that that's an impact. Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
One point, by the way, that I just wanted to clarify, with regard to the membership of the club, per the planning board decision, the club membership is capped, and in fact, the membership is 480, and that's what's permitted by the decision. There's no increase going on in that membership. Any new members simply replace old members.
Thank you.
I think this really brings us back to the situation with Millie's in Mannequett a number of years ago, where we were able to set up a trial basis, and it was recommended by staff in our packets. This is an option that I think the board should consider in this particular case. I think there's been some important modifications since our last meeting, and I think it might be wise to give the Westmore Club a trial run and take a look in the fall at how things went. I think it's important that there's a contact number for any complaints.
Absolutely.
That's an important thing that people can have, and the board should consider a trial basis and revisit this in the fall. It worked quite well with Millie's, and there was a lot of concern from the neighbors out there in Mannequett, and this may be something for the board to consider tonight. With all seriousness, I think it would work very well, and I think some of these concessions and changes have been very important.
We're fine with that, by the way.
Thank you. Board members, anything else? Jude?
I agree, I agree with what Carl just said. I want to thank you very much for your care in going through this in such detail. I can really see the attention that's been paid. I appreciate your working with the community nearby, and for those who are still opposed, I understand that it feels as though this is a new day and we're starting all over again, but I think there's an existing permit, there's been problems with how it's been enforced. I really think if there, I'd hold off, as Carl suggested, until fall. I really think if there, I'd hold off, as Carl suggested, until fall, but I think it would be good if somehow you could set the standard for yourself about what is acceptable noise level in terms of decibels or something like that with a measurable.
Sure.
Way to do that. I appreciate the point about if it's in a confined area that the noise isn't reaching at a distance, but I'm sure in the last 15 years since all this began, the capacity of electronic devices to send sound out and all that kind of thing undoubtedly have grown, and people need their peace and quiet, and that's a fair thing to say. Honestly, I wish the town noise ordinance were a little more stringent, but I think we probably are bound to not go beyond it at this point, at least without looking into that further, but I don't think we need to in light of what you've proposed here.
Yeah, and I would just reiterate that in all of my correspondence with all of the abutters, especially those who had written letters or contacted the board, that, you know, I think, again, the benefit that has turned out of this long, arduous process for both the neighbors and the planning board is that we have started good dialogue. I think the piece that I need to get my arms around and work with our neighbors on is that, you know, you have one neighbor who says, "I'm opposed to that, but if they're playing classical music, I want to hear more of it," and then you hear somebody else say, you know, "We don't want any noise." So I think we have to come to a balance, and believe me, I am more than aware of, I think now, having spoken with neighbors, where, hopefully where that balance is, but I have invited everyone to have discussion. There's only been two neighbors who have not responded to my request to meet and discuss issues, and, but with the rest of them, we are more than willing to work with that and have it happen. And I would just note, finally, that if, again, I know it's, I'm still in my probationary period of only being here a short period of time, but there were no noise complaints last year under my first year, and I am committed to making sure that we work with the planning board, and more importantly, the neighbors, to make sure that we are following the rules.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Quickly.
Just for clarification, so as no misunderstanding, I would support the amendment, giving you the amendment and trying it out this season and checking in in the fall. I would support it if I'm activated. Thank you.
Thank you. And the only thing I'm going to say to you gentlemen is I have to agree with Carl and Judith. I'm going to be maybe a little bit more stringent at this point, is that I think it's inherent for you to get past your fall seizing. So, end of October, probably the November planning board meeting is when we get a report. I'd like to propose that for at least two years right now, so that you understand where we're at, where it's going, and that I think that you are held to the letter of what needs to happen here.
We agree with that. As you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, in the special permit process, the board does have further bites at the apple anyway. So in a sense, we're permanently on probation.
True.
And any event, as far as formally coming back each year with a scheduled thing, this November and November of 19, fine. We certainly expect and hope that we'll be getting a clean bill of health each time, and it's Mr. Calder's job to make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
And he knows it.
Anyone else on the board?
We'll wait till we, we'll wait till we get to the next step.
Well, we are hitting the next step right now, because you've heard public testimony at this point, you have heard from the applicant, so I think we are there about what.
We'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, so the motion's now being second to close the public hearing discussion. Here are none of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, and now the pleasure of the board.
I want to just go over a couple more conditions for them, Barry. We talked about the phone, Arthur. Remember, we discussed the schedule of events? If they changed, Chris, remember we went over that last meeting?
Yes, sir.
That didn't, it got skipped over here because of all, you know, just different conversation.
What you're saying, to clarify, is that?
You gotta, you gotta get up and speak to the, they're gonna, Barry's gonna ask you that, so.
Thank you.
Might as well ask myself.
So that we'll provide a phone number?
The phone number to, you wrote in that condition.
Mm-hmm.
To, it doesn't actually just say neighbors, but those.
They have the language.
They have that down?
Yes, they, they've.
The schedule of events, I thought, was important, because they may or may not change, as Barry indicated, that some of them haven't even been filled yet.
Correct.
I think that our staff and Amy Baxter should have that list.
And we suggest that in the letter, and you pick a date of when you want to have those by, and we'll submit that, and if it is, as I said in my letter, if it's under the eight, when we have a, let's say we have four this year, if we're approved, then if somebody calls me tomorrow and says, "We'd like to have an event, October 3rd," we will, I mean, I'll work it out with your staff on what the process is, but absolutely, before it's confirmed, we will get approval from the planning board.
Because we have to, there's a lot of events that are, no, excuse me, a lot of special permits that conflict with the town, with certain events, and it's nice to be able to have a smooth.
You, if the, if the planning board writes the language, we will comply.
And I think also to Mrs. Chase's point, her complaints, her concerns, and what Fritz said, westerly wind is, you know, 90% of the summer, coming right across that, towards her house, or towards that direction. I think that if the, I think that possibly looking into maybe speakers that are lower to the ground for the pool area, I know what you're talking about, about that bar thing there where the speaker is, but as far as the tennis court noise, I didn't even realize there was, you know, more than the ball hitting the racket and yelling at each other, or something, you know, other than that.
They don't yell, they speak.
Well, speak loudly, right. So I think that that, as Carl and the chair said, we, that is going to have to be up to you to sort of work at that.
We'll make modifications, and I'll work with Mrs. Chase.
You know, I don't know if you can have her on the phone when the music's playing. Do you hear it now? You know, I don't know what can be done, but there's gotta be some.
We'll do everything we can to make sure that we.
Without getting decibel machines, I think we, you could work this out. I think that's it.
Okay. Anything else, board members? So, was that a motion of some extent?
I just wanted to make sure we had that.
All right.
Schedule of events changing, because that was brought up at the last meeting.
Okay, all right.
And we didn't talk about it.
So, in addition to everything they've proposed, this would be in addition to again?
Yes.
All right. Still, that leaves us at the juncture of what would you like to do, board members?
Make a motion to approve the addendum A.
Yep.
And with the conditions that we've added, and for one year, and your point about the two, I think that they get the message that it could be again for the following year. If there's no, I think what you meant was if there's no significant issue, it's still in review again. Is that what you meant?
I meant that with all sincerity. I think, I think two years, and it's not the first time we've done.
No, it hasn't been the first time. That's what I thought you meant, I wasn't sure.
Yep.
So that would be my motion.
Okay.
I don't think I'm changing my position. I just don't think I'm changing my position.
So you're, all right. But first of all, let me get a second, first of all, before.
I second the motion.
All right, so the motion's now made in second. Is there discussion on it? So you're.
My discussion is, I think, I'd still like to go backwards.
Okay.
So I think this motion is going forward, and I might be the only one against it, but I'm willing to accept the, obviously, the vote of the board.
Because essentially, if I read that correctly, you'd be denying the application.
I would.
Okay, that's all right. Is there any other discussion before the board? Are you guys all set with the conditions, Andrew, Leslie? Okay, good, all right. All right, so the motion's being seconded. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, so that'll be a four to one vote by this board. Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. That's going to bring us back to 8205. Thank you for your indulgence, which is topland properties modification.
Hi, Sarah Alge for the applicant. Sorry for not being here just at 5:00. I'll try. I'm not, I have a terrible cold, so my voice volume is not what it could be. So at the last meeting, and I just want to clarify, the, it's just the three remaining board members who are sitting on this application were not eligible to have any alternates, because this is a subdivision modification, just to be clear.
Yep.
From the outset. So, at the last hearing, you had requested, I think, to see, have us kind of flesh out our plans a little bit more than we had, and so we submitted kind of a draft sketch of what we would propose with some plantings and the parking. So what we have is a one-story building, it's about 1,080 square feet on the ground. We probably would do a basement for some storage, three parking spaces, an outside yoga deck, and I think some fairly significant plantings. The inside of the building is proposed to be an exercise area, a changing station, a very simple bathroom, a kitchenette, and what we're calling a library, where there'd be kind of books and other things that people could read and take. And that's really the extent of the proposal, the long and the short of it. I think it's very low impact. At the moment, it would be for the, it would be for the 36 lots that my client is purchasing. If other lots in the, this particular subdivision wanted to be part of it, we're going to figure out a mechanism to allow that to happen, but otherwise, it's, that would be the limit. We're not having any public, it's just for the members of this particular subdivision.
Right.
So my client's here, if you have any questions or you want to.
Okay, and just for the record, Mr. McClory, I believe, is able to sit on this, I was just conferring with him. Did, unless you know something different?
He was an alternate.
He wasn't a planning board member, he was an alternate.
Oh.
I was an alternate.
Oh.
But I was, I was at the meeting of April the 9th.
Did we get that clarified?
Is that how that works?
Hold on, just, can you, hold on for a sec? Pardon?
No, we can have a second.
Okay.
You can take a provisional vote.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I'd be happy to have him.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But I don't believe that he's eligible to vote, because at the time that he was here, he was an alternate.
Yep.
And I don't think you can mullen in.
That was my question.
At a meeting, from a meeting that's prior to your election. And I think we were heard twice.
I don't care. I can clarify, I was not at the March meeting, I was at the April 9th meeting, of which I was an alternate.
Right.
And did you review the March tape?
No.
Yeah, that's, that's even getting a little dicey.
Yeah, that's a problem too.
All right, yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it, okay. So, board members, is there anything you want to discuss at this point? No? Anything from, no? Anything from staff? No. Mr. Drezen, I know you were short on time, and I'd love to recognize you first, if you'd like to, sir.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Drezen from 4 Canterbury Lane and 41 Low Beach Road. And I want to say thank you to the Blue Flag developers, they've been very responsive to us. We've had a number of interactions with them by email and in person, and last, on Friday, June the 1st, we had a telephone conversation where the plans were outlined, and we were grateful for their willingness to listen to the current owners. For us, the problems remain in what's not said and what we think needs to be put on the public record. Because of the nature of the, the way the subdivision is currently owned, it's possible for the owners to be able to change some of the provisions as opposed to the planning board. And so we are hoping that Blue Flag has said that they will limit development to one dwelling unit per lot, and we would like that to be as part of the public record. Blue Flag stated they would maintain the ban on street parking, which is part of the subdivision, we'd like to make sure that's maintained. They'll keep requirements for the siding and roofing materials, we want to see that maintained, and that a swimming pool, tennis courts would not be part of the amenity, they're not in this, and we want to make sure that, that, once this is approved, that we don't come back asking for something else, but that the approval is for this specifically without that in place. And with respect to the, this amenity building, the question comes up with, we had a discussion on the telephone about ours, and many of the issues about this haven't been resolved, because they're going to be resolved once a homeowners association exists. And the difficulty with that is that we're asked, being asked to approve something for which there aren't any rules. So we would like Blue Flag to make it very clear as to who can use the facility. We've heard that it would only be for owners, but does that mean that it's owners, or if owners rent? Is it their renters that are allowed to use it? Can an owner have a party and bring people who aren't members? So there are lots of issues that we think need to be clarified before we say it's a, to go, before you go ahead with it, and, but otherwise, we think that we've made progress from where we were in, in March, but we think that additional clarifications are needed for the record.
Yep. Just for a minute, Sarah, that was kind of a laundry list, so I just want to give you a second to come on back.
Yeah, I'll try to respond to each of those. If I miss one, just ask me. The one dwelling per lot is a subdivision requirement already. It's also part of the homeowners association, the existing restrictions that are going to expire in a few years, but it's a subdivision requirement. I went through that with staff, so.
Okay.
I think that one is set. We're happy to have, well, the ban on on-street parking in connection with this proposal is fine. Siding and roofing materials, what kind of side, what kind of siding and roofing are we? We're just talking about cedar shingles and cedar roofs, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, the HDC, it's not like we're going to be able to go too crazy down there, it's not going to, yes, there's no swimming pool or tennis courts as part of this, and we're happy to have that as a, as a condition. We've also moved, I just want to point out, we've moved this to lot, I think it's lot 25, which is back in the corner, and that's the lot that it can be restricted to.
Great, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? Please. Up, in the pink shirt. Yeah. Yeah, I'll get a chance, though.
Hi, thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Janet Eyre. I live at 18 Lindbergh in Scottsdale. And despite the fact that my house is on the opposite side of the village, I wanted to come and voice my objection to the whole concept of a field house. I feel it's in direct opposition to what makes the Village of Scottsdale so special and unique in today's world. Scottsdale, as you guys know, is a place where one knows people from all over the village, not just their next-door neighbors, a place where residents gather on the Fourth of July to watch the local parade, play family games on the lawn by this chapel, a place where people chat with their buddies at the post office. And I feel that the proposed building is essentially a private neighborhood clubhouse. It would discourage people in Canterbury from mingling with the rest of the Scottsdale community. The field house would also set a precedent for future housing developments, and not only a private clubhouse is not in the spirit of Scottsdale, I feel they would destroy the spirit of Scottsdale. I'd strongly object to this and to any facility which divides Scottsdale into smaller, insular neighborhoods. Such neighborhoods would destroy the community feeling, which is the hallmark and the charm of Scottsdale. Thanks for allowing me to voice my objection.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you? Hi.
I'm Moni Faxon. Our family has had a house on Morrie Lane for 65 years, and we are very concerned about the precedent that this development and club association is going to set, not to mention the traffic, which is already phenomenal, because the only access to all those developments off of Low Beach Road is. because the only access to all those developments off of Low Beach Road is down Morrie Lane, and that has never been addressed. So, if you plan to put a fieldhouse there, why do you need a fieldhouse anyway? That seems to me to be sort of the precursor of a swimming pool and tennis court, even though you say you're not going to do that. And Sarah, you live right around the corner on McKinley. Surely, you're aware of the traffic that is created and noise by the summer house and the summer house little beach club. So, more of that is about the last thing we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, go ahead.
My name is Kathy Phillips. I live at 4 Packet Drive in Canterbury Lane Division. I would like the planning board to clarify to me how they are going to enforce that second dwelling prohibition. It's my understanding that it's prohibited now by virtue of the subdivision covenant that requires all deeds out of the subdivision to contain a restriction on second dwellings. That covenant you released, your interest in when you released all the lots, as I understand it. So, how can you really enforce, you can't enforce a promise by a developer. How is the planning board going to enforce a single dwelling on each lot?
Andrew Leslie, do you want to, thank you.
Chairman, all second dwellings require approval of the planning board, so we would not approve them.
You would not, on what basis would you have to not approve it?
Based on the common theme that was adopted when, and actually, I think the last comment is, was technically not correct. The one dwelling unit per lot was put in place because a direct road connection to Milestone Road was eventually blocked. So, the reduced density has a direct connection to a single access coming via Morrie. So, the planning board would not approve the second dwellings.
Okay. And that's, you can legally enforce that, you believe?
I do.
The layup is being transferred without restrictions, right? So, how can, and in fact, a lot in January was transferred with the wording. No, that restriction did not apply, but you're saying that you would enforce that?
Correct. And a building permit can't be issued unless the planning board approves it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask?
Good evening. For the record, Rhoda Wyman, I represent the Racemans and the Paleys. Racemans were at the last two meetings, but they were not able to attend tonight. But the Paleys are here. At the first planning board meeting, there was a lot of discussion back and forth about concerns that a lot of abutters had. My clients were part of that group, but we got a very strong message, at least I got a very strong message from this board, that they were looking for compromise. So, I went back to my clients and asked what would be a reasonable compromise so that I could negotiate it with Attorney Alger and come up with something that we felt comfortable with. So, I talked to my clients a lot about this, and it seemed based on their feelings, but also based on a number of letters that this board got. The number one concern seemed to be the pool, or certainly a main concern seemed to be the pool, and of course, the location. So, I went back to Attorney Alger and said, "We would like the pool eliminated, and we would like to make sure that anything that's built is built at the back." And we proposed either lot 24 or lot 25. And she went back to her client, and they've been back and forth with, obviously, all of the abutters that, you know, expressed an interest in it. But the plan that they have before you this evening is exactly what we asked for and what they've agreed to. So, I know there have been other people that have, you know, some additional concerns, but as far as my clients go, we're in agreement with what they're proposing to this board tonight, and we're, you're going to have our approval, and we're in favor of it. And we appreciate them making the concessions that we asked for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sir? Hi.
Hi. Rhoda, it was my attorney, and Jeffrey Paley, 37 Low Beach Road.
Thank you, sir.
We abutted the original location of lot 6, and our concern was exactly what you heard tonight with regards to Westmore. We were afraid of lots of noise. The pool was part of it. Traffic was part of it. Rhoda just described to you the compromise that we worked out with Sarah Alger. And I support that completely. I think they gave us everything we asked for. I would just like to address the concern that some people here seem to have about a lot of traffic and talking about this as though it's a club. It seems to me that this is an exercise room, essentially. It has machinery for exercising. It's only for the use of the people who are in the, the, what do you call it?
The subdivision.
In my view, most people who use it, if they're going for exercise, that short distance will walk. Concerns about added traffic because of new houses being built is not the issue here. The developer has a perfect right to do that if the board gives them approval to go ahead. So, I think, you know, the best we can expect in terms of noise, rather the worst we can expect in terms of noise, is yoga exercise, which is on the back porch in the back of the building. Yoga is an exercise that's done in silence, I think. I don't expect they're going to be playing loud rock music while they're doing exercises in yoga. And the three parking spaces that are not on the street should perfectly suffice for the people who are furthest away in the development to get to the exercise. I'm also extremely pleased that our suggestion that the Blue Flag developer left three lots between this proposal and any existing homeowner's home. So, that, you know, I think they took us all into consideration. And three lots actually is the minimum that could have been worked out if you look at the plans. It's exactly what we proposed, and they accepted it. So, I'm delighted with this. I do have some of the concerns that Dr. Drezen mentioned. Those, but those are questions, I think, to come later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. Here we go. So, anything else from the board at this stage?
Just, I just would like to point out that in the heart of Scottsdale is a private tennis court, and it appears that that doesn't create too much of a problem. So, I think an exercise room as far as noise and traffic that's only available to the people that are in the development shouldn't pose too much of a problem.
And every house can have a pool. So, eventually.
All right. So, board members, what would you like to do at this stage?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
And do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's now made and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Pleasure, the board.
You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions that were brought up, ban of street parking, one dwelling, cedar on the roof and siding, no swimming pool or tennis courts, and the approval of, I believe it's lot 25 in the back corner for the purpose of a exercise room. Unless there's something else that I'm leaving off.
So, we have closed the public hearing, so unless this is a point of order specifically, yeah. A point of order? In other words, we have, okay, so, yeah, sorry. I'm sorry, Jen, you can just ask me to speak up. I can do that really well if I have to. That I don't mind. Thank you. Happy to do that for you. Thank you. Sorry about that. So, if motion was now made-
You have a second.
And seconded. Discussion on the issue? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thank you. Duly noted. That's going to bring us to 135 Orange Street LLC. Mr. Santos, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. For the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors. Also, attorney for the applicant, Steve Cohen, is in attendance. The applicant being 135 Orange LLC. This was a special permit application, if you remember, for three separate apartment buildings, totaling eight bedrooms on 135 Orange Street, which is accessed, Orange Street is in this location here. There was an easement, access easement in this area here, and then the site is located here with the predominant abutter to the north and south being the Commons' development. The application was heard on, I believe, two previous meetings. At the last meeting, we had addressed concerns or some edits to the plan made by Ed Pesci. And there was also an outstanding issue with regard to correspondence with the fire department. Both of those issues have been resolved. The fire department has issued a letter, or at least an email, to staff saying that they have no issue with regard to the configuration of the driveway and the access to the buildings. And Mr. Pesci has done his final review of the engineering component of the, the application. And again, there were, all those issues have been resolved. There's been no change to the plan dimensionally with regard to parking or the facility itself. As you remember, there was concerns from the Commons' residents about restricting access from this site to that, to their property. We did provide fencing in that area, and that is also not, has not changed. So, there's still an isolation, if you will, between this property and the Commons' property so as to avoid people parking in the Commons and then walking into this area here. The application does not require waivers with regard to parking and/or screening. So, it's a, essentially, an application which is essentially a special permit for the eight apartment units, which is allowed in this particular zoning district. And at the risk of being short, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Sure. Board members, anything? Nope, 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 nope.
Oh, and Steven just whispered in my ear too, just at the last end. The HDC has approved all three of the, all three of the buildings.
Great. Andrew Leslie, anything? Anyone in the public wanting to comment? Come on down, Campbell.
Campbell Sutton, 15 Appleton Road. I just had a couple of things, one of which is, I think at the last meeting, I even mentioned how all these cars are going to be going out onto Orange Street at the same place that Marine is. And in this revised plan, it mentions having a pedestrian way connect into what is now a public road that goes between. And it just seemed to, you know, me, just with my previous issue with the Orange Street and loading up that area with traffic, if, if this traffic to these apartment buildings went out onto that road with maybe a sidewalk, so there was a pedestrian entry, so that the traffic would, obviously, would have an opportunity to go left or right and come out either on Orange or up on Pleasant Street. I thought that might be something to think about. And I just wanted to get something straight. So, it's three apartment buildings with eight bedrooms. Are they, so I'm a little confused. Is this eight single-bedroom apartments? I thought they were two-bedroom apartments or something, or the one-bedroom garage, something.
It's eight bedrooms total. In three units.
In three units, okay. So, then what you presented last time is still-
Same configuration.
The same configuration. Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Santos, yeah?
If I could just respond, I think I responded the last time to the parking issue and the traffic, just as a, as an aside. Again, this is a, if it was a commercial project, I'd fully agree that we'd probably have to look at the amount of impact on Orange Street. But again, this is a residential project, if you will, an eight-bedroom. So, you don't have a constant inflow of traffic in and out as you would have in a retail situation. And again, the Commons' property has expressed what their concern is. We do not have a right to access them with regard to any type of driveways, any type of easements and so forth. So, we've respected the request of the Commons to, to limit access to their property. And those are, I think, the same responses I had at the last meeting, but happy to make those points again. Thank you.
Great. Hi.
Hi. I'm Laura McClasky. I own Cowboys, which is part of the Commons. I'm on the Commons' board, so I'm just here to say what he said was right. Yes, that's, that's our position.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
To this point, to people not coming and going, I mean, I don't know people are going to be living here, but I know I come and go from my house three or four times a day out of my driveway. And so, that's just my house. That doesn't include my mom coming and going. And so, I think to think of this as though everyone's going to clear out in the morning and come back in the evening might not be exactly what will happen. And my thought wasn't to come into the Commons, per se. There's that stretch where Marine Home Center, I guess you could call them, they have that narrow stretch there, right? That it's, so that, so you have-
That's the Marine Home Center right there.
Right, and so, that's-
And then this is our, that's the existing driveway.
Right, right.
And then that's the real estate.
I don't want, I don't, so, I know I'm just being complicated here. I just, this, let me see if I can do that. Okay, so, I think in this area, there's a thin land area, like in other words, there's not a lot that happens and would allow you, you know, obviously, this could be impossible, but it would allow to come out this way onto the road. I'm not talking about coming out into the Commons or anything. It just seems like you have this area where people are coming out. You have one, two, three, four, maybe five entries to Marine over here. And then you have, is this the exit right here?
No, right there.
Right here, right?
Yep.
So, I'm just saying, there seems to be a lot of redundancy in terms of traffic.
Mr. Chairman, can I take a stab at this to sort of fix this discussion? If you don't mind. Maybe a little humor at the same time.
Be brief.
I agree with Ms. Sutton, but it is never going to happen because they own this rights to the Commons. It's very complicated. This is just like the situation with the Willie Howes property, the, you know, the Patrick Ridge and that, you know, project down there. They own rights. It's very complicated. I don't agree. We got the little road behind the Cave Cod 5. You know, all hell is going to break loose. Guess what? Maybe 10 cars a day go through there, but it's connected. To get this connected, there's another generation is going to do this. Hopefully, I'll still be here at 90, but we'll get, this is going to, eventually, someday, somebody's going to wake up, and all the people that are upset in the Commons will go away, and all of a sudden, they'll be like, "Why didn't we do this in 2018?" That's what's going to happen, but not today. Sorry. That's just how it is, and they have a right to build this, and we have to deal with what we have. How was that?
And I will say to the board too, that this connection is not going to happen. Just that the grade difference between here and here is just too significant.
And I think with Laura stepping up, she's probably concerned if it was to open up, then it would affect the parking and people parking on the other side of that. So, I don't think it's going to happen tonight either.
That's all right.
What he just said.
Anyone else on the board or anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this?
The, go ahead.
I was just going to mention, I mean, I, I think the issue Ms. Sutton brought up again in terms of the traffic coming out onto that road is, is an issue. I don't know how we solve it.
Just to be brief, I mean, obviously, we don't have any rights to go to the west across somebody else's property, but even if we did, you know, that property to the, to the north, where the real estate office is, has a bunch of people going in and out. That's what real estate agents do. They go in and out all day. And there's a couple- That's what real estate agents do. They go in and out all day, and there's a couple of apartments over, and I'm not aware of any, you know, issues that have been there. This is basically 20 feet or less from the crosswalk, so I don't know if it's the worst thing in the world that traffic slows down every once in a while over there to let people get by. I mean, there's a ton of in and out from Marine Home Center. I'm very familiar. I'm sure you're all very familiar with it. So people nose out and, you know, enter onto that all, all the time. It's not, to date, a high-traffic accident area.
Just one thing, Mr. Cohen, since you're up. Did we happen to talk about, just any thoughts about maybe working with the town toward something on Orange Street with the bike path and stuff? Maybe a contribution or something to...
I don't believe that issue's been raised.
Oh. Because, you know, here we go again. If we're talking about traffic and stuff, and, you know, we also need to look at alternate forms of transportation as well. Just would like to throw that out a little bit.
Sure. I guess what I would say is, you know, without throwing money around, is that this is just a residential project, obviously not a subdivision or a commercial project, but there's an appropriate number associated with something like this. I'm sure that you and the staff would have that kind of experience to come up with the appropriate number, and, you know, that's what special permits are an opportunity for.
Yep. Any thoughts? Go ahead.
Two thousand per dwelling unit is what the board has considered.
Yeah, that, that number is consistent with other permits I've seen. I wouldn't object to that.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anyone else? Board members, what, what would you like to do at this point?
Make a motion?
If you're all set, someone needs to make a motion to close the public hearing then.
I make that motion.
All right. Motion's not made in a second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, and the pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve Ed Pesci's concerns that have been addressed or not addressed or not found, whatever the, they've decided, and the conditions that we've... What, we had conditions from the previous hearing, right, Leslie? Were there anything? Was it nothing? So just Barry's request?
That's it.
And that's it? Yikes. Okay. That's my motion.
And do I hear a second to that?
Second, aye.
Motion's not made in a second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thank you all.
Just one, one question.
Yes, sir.
What is it the, towards, was that the bike path fund? I didn't...
Phase three.
Phase three, okay.
Yep. Okeydoke. And that brings us to End of the Road LLC, 144 Old South Road. Mr. Wilson, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
How are you?
And the board. Michael Wilson, on behalf of End of the Road...
Yeah, and, excuse me.
I noted I'm accusing myself from this.
Yes, please. 6:20. Yes, sir. Sorry, apologize.
Michael Wilson, on behalf of End of the Road LLC, a Massachusetts limited liability company, and the title holder to the 144 Old South Road property. Previously had major commercial development special permit issued. I mean, if you remember the operation of Rainbow Motors. The applicant is now asking to go back to that use and include with it a full service. There's garage bays in the back where the FedEx is located and the other garage sorting facility. Turn that into the, the maintenance portion. There is a two-bedroom apartment above for employee housing, and then an additional aspect would be relief for a second curb cut. There is also, the application requests relief to install two above-ground gas tanks in the back corner, which, which we occupy parking spaces 24 and 25. It should actually read three. That doesn't affect the parking calculation. This is calculated at 13 spaces. 26 are provided. Three would be consumed by the location of the above-ground gas tanks, leaving more than adequate parking per the code. I have a supplement for the board. It's from the fire department. They have it, right, and that's dated today with respect to the containment system that would be put in before it could be permitted to use, the above-ground gas tanks. The concerns that the board had, which is why we moved it from the May meeting to today, I believe, have been addressed with the additions to the, to the plan. You have in there requests for relief for the second curb cut. I think you have a photo from 2003 aerial maps that show those two curb cuts have been in place since that time. There's no anecdotal or evidence in the file to suggest that there's been issues with traffic safety on that two-curb-cut location, so we would like the blessing to keep that for flow, because it does allow travel to go around the back of the building and out a different curb cut. And I think also from the original May hearing date, you have the water company letter as well with respect to the fuel tanks. The open space requirement is calculated to be 20% and 24% is provided. I think just generally, this is not a retail location. It's not going to be something that is going to require a loading zone, asking the board to make a finding that that's not necessary for the type of use that's going to be put here. It's the sale of used cars and the maintenance of the cars in the back and the garage space.
Anything else?
That's it.
Great. Board members, do you have any questions?
I just...
Yeah, go, please.
The, the staff notes, it said you're requesting parking relief. Is that, but I thought I just heard you say more than adequate parking.
No parking relief is requested. The calculations with the two-bedroom apartment and the use and the square footage mandate 13 spaces. 26 are on the plan, the site plan that's been submitted. Three will be absorbed, leaving still more than enough.
So you're not requesting?
Not requesting relief for that.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, sorry. So I have a few quick questions for you. So are all these uses that you're talking about, like repair, the repair, the painting, the washing, are those all going to take place inside the building?
All inside the building.
Okay.
All have to be permitted.
Perfect.
Stay permitted with respect to any type of use. Certainly, a car sale license has to be obtained, a class-three license from the state before the town is going to go forward with it. The same with any type of downdraft booth or anything that you do with respect to auto repair, bodywork. All of that's got to be permitted by the state.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking from the engineering perspective with Mr. Pesci as well, too, because we've had, we've gotten into separators, recyclers. Those are probably all things that, I'm not sure to what extent we need to look at it, but unless that's outside our purview.
The stormwater collection system certainly is going to be reviewed by Ed.
Yep. But Leslie, Andrew, is that something, the internals on the building? Like washing paths, stuff like that? Yeah, I'm just curious. I'm not sure how that all flows now.
We have in our engineer review, like washwater recovery systems for, you know, like Marine operations, so it would be something similar to that, that he would take a look at. You know, Ed hasn't looked at this at all, so it may need to be held over regardless.
Go ahead.
And I also have Mr. Santos here, who can address those specific aspects of the, of the engineering part.
So just for, again, Paul Santos with AM Engineering. I did the survey of, actually, for that, did have not done any of the engineering, but the site was previously approved in the public wellhead recharge with the recharge system for the drainage. Any work that would be done in the interior of the building would actually be tied to the plumbing code, because any interior drainage will not go to the drainage system. It will go to the sewer system through a, an approved state, what they call an MDC trap. So any internal work is not connected to drainage. It's connected to sewer.
Thank you. So, if I may, too, you suggested possibly site improvements in the area. So can we circle around that for a sec?
Yeah, I have some other questions.
Okay. So this is probably a good time to do it.
All right, so I have some questions about just generally, like the operations and how it's going to work. I wasn't around for Rainbow Motors, so I don't have that historic memory that some people may. So it seems like there's, you know, quite a bit going on. There's vehicle rental, vehicle repair, and used vehicle sales. And, you know, maybe I missed this in the application, but, you know, how's that going to be separated out on the site? Will there be, like, separate areas for the cars awaiting repair? Will the rental be in one part of the site? Will the sales be in one part of the site? You know, what are the hours of operation? You know, that's a pretty large parking area. How will it be screened? I did see something in the file that showed, like, some trees maybe sketched on, but, you know, maybe we need more than that. Let's see, what about a dumpster location? Or where will you be keeping all the garbage that's generated from the facility? That's not on the plan. And I think you said that the repair and maintenance and all that will take place inside the building, so that you took that.
That's right. The garage base in the back of the building, I got to assume they're going to put the dumpster in the back of the building as well, and we can certainly supplement the plan to show the location of that. The flow of it does allow, and it's paved all the way around the building, so you can go behind. That can be an adequate location for any type of garbage. You're also going to have the gas tanks in the back northeast corner of the building, also a decent location to put your dumpsters, if that's where the board would like to see it, somewhere back there. There's significant screening along the eastern border, which is Barry Byrne's trucking operation to the, to the east, to the direct east, along the backside. You've got the coffin pit. So if the board is unsatisfied with the existing vegetation that is there, it can be supplemented with Leland or Privet, however the board would like it.
Okay.
So I think that would address screening. All auto repairs are going to be happening inside the garage bays in the back. Rentals and sales are going to be up front. There's a showroom, which used to house the Krav Maga studio, but prior to that, it used to house the showroom for Rainbow Motors. So we'd like to go back to the permit that was previously issued, and the use is going to be basically the same from the old Rainbow Motors facility.
And then what about the total number of vehicles? Like, how many vehicles will be on-site for sale? How many, like, maximum number for sale, maximum number for rental? How will those be stored? It seemed like in the application, some overflow was referenced, but it was on the Byrne site, so I don't know if that was from the old permit, or if there's some agreement that's been worked out with him, or, or if everything will be contained on this site.
It is proposed that everything would be contained on this site. This is not going to be a Don Allen car lot. I think you're going to limit it to restored Jeeps is the, is the general angle. Rainbow Motors was a Jeep dealer, and I think the, the concept is that there's a niche market out there for people on Nantucket who like Jeeps. My client likes Jeeps, and he has a lot of them. I'm not saying that he isn't going to sell all these vehicles that aren't that, but it's not going to be a huge car lot. And then we have the interior portion for the operations of the rental part. There's office space inside. We can provide, if the, if the board wants, supplement the file with how the interior is broken down.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Michael, is it fair to say that your number of vehicles will not exceed the parking spaces?
It would be much less than the parking spaces we need to accommodate for the public to come in and be able to...
Right.
So the, the owners and those applicants on hand rental vehicles and used cars for sale are not going to interfere with the required 13 spaces that the calculation will drive.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else? Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this? Hi.
Hi, Campbell Sutton, 15 Appleton Road, and I just wanted...
Can you come a little closer to that, Campbell? Thank you.
Oh, sorry, 15 Appleton Road. So I just wanted to address one thing in the vegetation piece, so it doesn't really have a lot to do with anything else, but the use of this Leland Cypress everywhere is really going to begin to create a problem. Even in my area, where there was a house moved, and there was probably four feet, five feet at best, you know, between the road and their fence, they put Leland Cypress. Within three years, those things are going to be hanging into the road. And eventually, I mean, they, they get very wide, and they get very tall unless they're constantly maintained, but they will, they're meant to be a 60-foot tree, so they're going to go somewhere. So I'm just not sure... We're using them everywhere, right? And so I'm just trying to address that maybe you want to think about something that has a more longevity and is more native to the area as a thought.
Thank you.
I call it the new Privet.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, sorry, one more question.
No, please.
The, it looks like there's sort of a organic parking that's grown up off Arrowhead Drive, halfway in the street layout, halfway in the road. Is that, that didn't show up on your site plan. Is that...
That's existing in the field from, and I think that that is a 2014 aerial, so it's not, I see what you're saying. On the property line there, it looks like a, two vehicles that are off Arrowhead. The applicant's not looking to go beyond the bounds of the property, and the parking is very delineated there. Mr. Santos did this plan for us. And that also has to accommodate the 24% green space, 20%, which is required, but we're going beyond that. So the parking will be limited to the plan that's depicted here.
So that exists, where it says existing parking, that is intended to stay or to be removed?
That will be removed.
That will be removed, the parking spaces that we have.
Yeah, I don't know who parks there. I couldn't figure it out, but we didn't include that. Our open space number goes around it, because it's gravel. It doesn't meet the definition of open space, but technically, but I don't know who's parking.
It just kind of gets...
It's there, and people, but it's there. We located it.
It's like a chicken box thing.
You know, somebody's parking there, whether they're from over here or not, we didn't determine, but, but I didn't include that. The open space number that you have on the plan, this is excluded out. So if that is eliminated, you'd have that area returned to open space.
Okay. Because, Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest that be removed and restored within the boundary of the property.
And this is going to be made more attractive, because they want customers to come, and it's going to be landscaped. It's going to be appropriately signed, and the entrance way and the exit way are going to be identified. It's going to have a use that's going to be more user-friendly and more aesthetically pleasing, because it has to.
Yeah. It's, it's basically been abandoned. I mean, not abandoned, but kind of...
It's gone through a series of, of pretty random...
Anything's going to be an improvement here.
Exactly.
Not, I don't think we need to go too crazy, like we, you know, almost did at the Coca-Cola place. Sort of similar. I mean, as far as the screening goes, I mean, I think the best thing to do is to have a modest improvement of what's there, maybe add some newer stuff that is more popular, but not necessarily screen the place like it's in a residential neighborhood. You know what I mean?
I do.
That's how I see it.
And, and of course, along the Arrowhead Drive, that's going to draw the most public view, as you're coming down to the facility, that's going to be the area now that they're going to get rid of the gravel, sort of parking that's there on the corner. I don't know that there needs to be a significant amount of screening between this property and Barry Byrne's...
No.
Trucking lot.
I would say no.
Only if the owner wanted, that his customers did not have to see the stockpile material there. And along the backside, you've got a commercial industrial use on Tomahawk.
Yeah.
They're not really, I can't imagine they're going to be too concerned with what they're already seeing. So it's really the Arrowhead Drive, and as you approach from the west. And when we defer to how staff and the board wants that, I understand Leland Cypress can get pretty out of control, but they can also be managed very well into shaped hedges that make it very thick and functional. But again, that was, I'm not saying my client wants to put Leland Cypress out there. If the board wants screening, that's an evergreen versus Privet, which dropped leaves in the winter.
Ms. Santos, yeah?
Holly, could, could you bring up the aerial? Because actually, the Arrowhead is fairly well-screened. I, I just located what I thought were specimen trees for the purposes of this plan, for the as-built. Like, you've got a specimen tree here, a tree here, and a tree here. But if you bring up that aerial, yeah, this, this area, I mean, quite, well, the gravel's a little bit further, this gravel's a little bit further out than shown on this aerial. But that area is, is screened right now. There are more trees and some screening in that area that does exist. You know, it's, it's not a, like I said, that tree there was located, this tree was located... tree was located, but there are some other trees in here that I think are original that weren't specifically planted. I think this one was planted, that was planted, and this one was planted. Uh, but there is a, a pretty good screen there between Arrowhead and, and the site. And then this area is open here, and then that's what we're talking about. You know, this is all basically, you know, commercial uses all around.
Okay. We'll just have to do another site visit and certainly work with staff on that as well, too, to get some ideas.
Yeah.
Anyone else wish you to comment on this?
Sorry.
So, probably the best thing to do would be July 9th. Would that work for you?
Okay.
A landscape plan, or what would the board's question?
I think you've got, I think you've got a number of things that staff is looking for in terms of, of trying to delineate some information. No?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm fine if, you know, I don't think we're, you know, quote, going crazy with the landscaping here.
No.
I think that, that area needs to be cleaned up, and I think that parking doesn't meet any of our codes or requirements, so it needs to be removed. If, if there wants to be parking along the street, um, it needs to be parallel, not sort of crossing over a line, and that's really a third curb cut. So, that really needs to be removed, and I think we can handle that at the staff level unless you want a great deal of detail.
And we'd be fine with limiting whatever rentals and vehi- vehicles for sale to not exceed the number of spaces that must be available, which is the 13.
The two, there's two cars that are on Arrowhead Drive.
Oh, that's just, yeah. No, no, that's just from the other businesses on the other side of the street.
Right.
They just sort of show up there. That's how that's happened.
I mean, we're, we're, staff is only concerned with the appearance of that property at the corner, basically, and along Old South Road. Um, we're not concerned about the other two areas that were discussed at all.
Uh huh.
But that is a visual property there at the corner.
Yep.
Um, I think we can handle the landscaping, you know, plan that's submitted as part of it unless you wanna, you know, get more specific.
I guess my only other question, does that have to go through Red Pashy still for drainage and all that stuff, or you all kept that?
They have a certificate of water quality compliance.
Okay.
And they're not making changes to the site, but I think we do need a revised plan that shows, um, the location of the above-ground tanks, um, the surrounding containment area, uh, the location of the dumpsters, and, you know, all the related site improvements. And then, one thing that I would add, um, for Don Allen, I remember we put in a condition that they can't have any display in the front yard setback.
Yeah.
So, I would suggest that.
Spot.
And then, um, I don't think we talked about hours of operation. I mean, that's something that's usually in the permits.
See.
Or not, but it's worth talking about.
They're not gonna be able to talk.
No. Is there...
Late at night, is all it was.
Or something like the repair.
Oh, you mean like noise at night and stuff like that?
So, that if there are...
Eight days, seven days, six days?
Eight, seven days.
What, how many days a week?
Six.
Six, Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Saturday.
Okay.
But that would be difference between open for business versus like working at night, like inside.
Yeah, if you're gonna be inside, I think it...
I mean, I would say...
If you're in the back in a garage, working on a car on the lift inside of a garage bay, is that something that the board wants to start conditioning when working on inside?
No, I don't want, I don't want to. I just wanna make sure that we know the difference between open for business versus working on a vehicle at night. It's not the same thing.
For the rental and the, um...
Yeah.
And the used cars, that would certainly be tailored around the public.
Right.
Coming in, and that would be something, six days a week, seven to eight, or whatever feels is appropriate for those types of hours. I would ask that there not be limits on whether employees can be inside.
Right, right.
There's gonna be housing above. Certain aspects of vehicle repair might be good to do, and set it aside for a while and come back in the evening. But for the public access, perfectly acceptable to limit those hours.
Yeah. I think that's, that's what I wanted to make sure we separated. That's all. So, so staff is good with dealing with the landscaping and...
And we'll submit the revised plan based on staff's recommendations for landscaping, which will incorporate the containment and the dumpster locations, which are, I'm gonna submit are gonna all be back in the location of those gas tanks, which are in parking spaces 24, 23, 24, 25, and the northeast corner.
Yeah, furthest away from the street. Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
So, Mr. Board Chair, I guess we're gonna activate you for this one, if you don't mind. So, what's the pleasure of the board? Do we need to hear anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Are you comfortable with the current way this is gonna flow, if you are...
I think the understanding is it's gonna be subject to a, uh, plan for landscaping and other things that the, for the board, I mean, for the staff to approve?
Yes.
So, it's not coming back to us? I'm fine.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, good. All right, so will be appropriate at this point?
I'll make a motion to close.
There you go. And do I hear a second? Motion's not made in second before discussion. Barry, none of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have you unanimously. The pleasure of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make a motion to approve the request with the conditions on the landscaping, hours of operation, and et cetera, to be handled by staff with the applicant.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Motion's not made in second before discussion. Barry, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have you unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's gonna bring us to 8223, which is mothballway subdivision. Again, Mr. Trudell is refused on this one. Mr. Dale, good evening. Mr. Malloy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Kevin Dale. I represent the Applicants Institute Trust, 273-281. I'm with the Gahanaharpon Trust. With me is Dan Malloy. When we met last on May 14th, the board asked some good questions and asked for additional information, including stormwater analysis and site analysis, and a revised plan that showed both practical and legal access for this two lot approval required subdivision. Uh, Dan Malloy was with me from Site Design Engineering has provided the board with the information. And I'd ask that the board, in its discretion, approve the modified and amended subdivision plan and move forward tonight. I'm gonna ask Dan to talk a little bit over.
Good evening. Uh, so we made some modifications of the plan at the, based on the comments received at the previous meeting. Uh, one of the changes had to do with the access. It was a question regarding the width of the access in this area here. Uh, we've increased that to 12 feet, so you can now access via mothballway through the right-of-way here, and then up to the building layer of the lot if so desired. So, we have made that change to the plan to provide the reasonable access. There was also a question and request about a site analysis report. Uh, we did prepare something to address that question, that outlines the environmental constraints and conditions on the property. Uh, to do with stormwater, we did look at it, but I'd like to offer the board, uh, since we're not necessarily building something with, which requires a stormwater facility, uh, to the extent that we can put roof drains and infiltration systems on the dwellings as we move them, uh, to the extent the houses already have gutters and we can't put them in place, we'd like to do so. Uh, that answers your questions.
Thank you. Board members? Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah. Um, forgive me, I'm still a little confused. Um, take a look at the, I'll just point it out.
Yep.
This area right here. So, yeah, I'm glad to see that you widened the access into Lot Two. Um, but just looking at the, the plan as it stands before us, I don't understand where the frontage, where the street is, or the frontage is, or the access to Lot One, unless it's not...
Radius.
Uh, this is the same plan, just in color. It's a little bit clearer to see. So, what you have for a right-of-way is Lot Three.
Yeah.
So, and this would be what would be considered a modified cul-de-sac. You're not seeing the full circle, which you might be accustomed to seeing. So, the roadway itself is this Lot Three. The frontage for Lot Two is this section right here on what would be the right-of-way is Lot Three.
So, the intent is the entire Lot Three is, in effect, the street?
That's correct.
And, so then why, just as, why is it depicted on the site? Is it 20 or 40-foot, uh, 20 or 40-foot, the mothballway extension just going into Lot Two? Is it just the way you've shown it on the plan? Or is there...
So, it's a 12-foot width, right, this is a 12-foot width here.
No, I'm, yeah, that, no, this piece.
So, there you have, you have a 40-foot width here where it comes off of mothballway.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's 40 feet here, and then it widens out to this wider turning area there. If there is a 40-foot piece off of mothball, that's addressed.
Okay. But moth, as, on the site plan, it says mothballway extension, 40-foot wide private, 40-foot wide private way.
Go ahead.
That's all I'm asking about.
Yeah, so it's, it's mothballway is here, and there's the 40-foot section on mothball where the right-of-way would come in. And then it widens out to this bigger area.
But shouldn't, should, maybe, maybe this is just how it's depicted. Shouldn't this be depicted as, with something other than showing this 40-foot wide right-of-way?
I think the plan behind it shows that. Answers the question.
Yeah, I, I'm not, you explained where the access is and the frontage. I just, question of why it's depicted the way it is.
I think I understand your question now. So, what you're seeing on the plan, I think what you're referring to, so it's 40 feet wide here.
Yeah.
And you're seeing, are you referring to this continuation of a dash line in this area?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what you're seeing there, uh, this entire right-of-way here, so the, this 40-foot strip that comes out right here is an existing landcourt lot, and we're adding this triangle to it. So, we have to show this dash line for landcourt purposes, but it's not, it's one, it will be one contiguous piece after this process.
Got it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Julie.
Uh, I wanted to ask something, maybe I should've gotten clear last time, but the, um, when I look in the bylaws about rear lot subdivisions, it's under, uh, Section 8D of, uh, 139, I think it is. Got it here in front of me.
Yes, the zoning bylaw.
Right. But you don't reference that in your application, and it's as if you're saying there's some other proviso that would allow use of a rear lot subdivision quite apart from that other bylaw, and I wondered if you'd explain your thinking on that.
Yes. Uh, we're asking for approval under the Massachusetts Subdivision Control Law, Chapter 41, not the Nantucket zoning bylaw or the Massachusetts zoning law. As I understand it, the planning board has jurisdiction over approval-required subdivisions pursuant to Chapter 41, the subdivision control law. And zoning is a separate matter, really not before the purview of the planning board. So, this is not a rear lot subdivision. This is an approval-required subdivision under the subdivision control law, and that law sets forth and defines terms that are applied to a subdivision like this, terms like frontage, like access, other things. Uh, as I pointed out in my letter to the board, the subdivision control law does refer to zoning in a very limited way, refers to the length of a frontage road, has to conform to the minimum frontage requirements, length of frontage for zoning purposes. But that's really the only reference. And oftentimes, we, we run into the situation where the planning board may approve something under the subdivision control law that then has to be approved again by zoning, which is separate jurisdiction.
I, I understand that, but I could go back to the text that I'm reading, if you don't mind, to pursue it a bit further.
Sure.
Title here is "Special Permit to Create Rear Lot Subdivisions." So, I would assume that that means this, I'm reading, uh...
We, we're not applying for a special permit for a rear lot subdivision.
My question to you is, why are you not? Now, I'm not assuming that you are. I'm trying to see...
Now, I understand.
Why? Because it seems to me if there's a specific provision that looks like it would be relevant, I wanna know why not.
I understand. And you may, not to assume anything, but you may be thinking about the rear lot subdivision zoning procedure, which requires a proof plan to show you can do certain things.
Right.
And then you have your actual special permit rear lot plan that's a bit different. We are not asking for a special permit for a rear lot subdivision tonight. That's not part of this application. We are proposing an approval-required subdivision plan that provides both legal and practical access to both lots. We wanna reduce three building lots to two, and since we're able to do that, we want the planning board, in its discretion, to allow us to use an existing, already built-out easement as practical access, instead of the other practical access that we're providing. But we're not asking for that, uh, permission or approval under the zoning law. We're asking it under the subdivision control law, Chapter 41.
And why are you doing that?
Because, in my view, the planning board has discretion as, as the authority to approve, approve a required subdivisions, to waive strict adherence with some Chapter 41 requirements, and to do exactly this, which is to allow us to use the easement that's already constructed and everybody's been using for more than 25 years for practical access. We can continue to use it as long as we show you on our approval-required plan that we're providing legal and practical access from mothballway to both lots.
All right, thanks.
But, but you still have the zoning requirement.
We are conforming to the zoning requirement. But if we have a zoning issue, we certainly will go to the zoning board of appeals only.
The only reason I'm asking that is you keep referring to separate access. And as far as I'm looking at this plan, you're providing, on, on the, the plan, you're providing access through mothballway.
On the plan, we are providing access, practical and legal access, from mothballway over that road lot to lots one and two. That's what the plan shows.
Yes.
We're asking the planning board, once we've established that we can provide both practical and legal access, as shown on the plan, to allow us to use the existing easement access rather than building out the road from mothballway into lots one and two. And we're not the first to do this, and this board has, on many occasions, allowed the same thing.
I'm not questioning what, um, not questioning what, we, we can weigh of a lot of things. I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm curious. I'm just asking the question. Don't you still have the issue under the zoning bylaw, not under our jurisdiction, under the jurisdiction of, of the zoning board, of the question of access, frontage and access, under which I don't think, your, your argument has been that under the zoning bylaw, I'm sorry, under the subdivision law, you don't have, you can provide separate legal and practical access? Or are you also arguing that you can provide separate legal and practical aspect, uh, access under the zoning bylaw?
I'm not addressing the zoning issue tonight, and I would assume that the planning board would do, if it approves this plan, would do as it has done on scores and scores of other approval-required and our plans, the legend that says, "This plan does not determine zoning requirement."
Okay. I, I recognize that. It's just the way you were, the way you were phrasing it, it sounded like you were assuming that you've, that you can provide separate practical and legal aspect for zoning purposes.
No, I, I wanna be clear.
Yeah, and that's all it was...
Just, just to say...
You said it, and so I just wanted to...
I wanna extricate and eliminate zoning from this here, because this is not the zoning board.
I agree.
That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
We're here under the subdivision control law.
Okay. Move side. Yeah. Okay.
Anything else? Anything else from staff? No? Ladies and gentlemen, anyone wanting to comment on this? Okay. It's a pleasure of the board at this point.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, and the pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve the essential subdivision plan, creating the frontage on mothball way extension.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys want to do one more, or do you want to take a little five-minute breather?
Breathe.
All right. So, we're just going to declare a very short, five-minute control recess.
Yep.
Ladies and gentlemen, so, I really do want to keep it five minutes tight, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's for me, Barry, so I can... What else?
I mean, are you...
Yeah.
I just think, I just dropped, yeah. Are you sure?
Yeah.
I just don't know what I was doing with this thing. I thought it was all turned up.
Stretch.
Yes.
Yeah, that's rough.
I think sometimes some stuff kicks on in the background. I'm not sure what it is.
That chair just sort of fall back and like that's the knack of it. Hope I don't disappoint the next person sitting in this slot. They're all the same.
Yeah, they just dropped back. I, look, there's, you can raise it up.
Yeah, I did. Bring up how it looks, maybe something, it's, it's, he's got longer legs, and his upper legs, and he's taller, and so I think sometimes it's weird.
No.
I thought I saw, like, one Charles in this, got a couple of other...
Unless that, underneath there's a ball bar support.
See. This one, that he probably means, or he wouldn't hit that chair, or whoever sits here.
Well, when we come in, you can use that one, and I'll use one of these in the future.
If it doesn't hurt you, Carl's not going to be... Yep, just one more. That's going to be over, the other, the other...
Well, you know what? This helps here, and we see a chair. Wait, which way am I turning? Yeah, this way.
Raise it up?
If you turn it counterclockwise...
Oh, oh, oh. It flips back?
Yeah, that's a difference.
Oh, thank you. Wow. That's a real help. Think I'll still bring the pillow.
Yeah, a little ball bar support.
Yep.
These are very deep chairs.
Yep. Yes. So, how long's your daughter going to stay? How long will your daughter and granddaughter stay?
They're here, well, they're here until August, except for the trip we're taking to, for our 50th wedding anniversary. We're taking all of our kids and grandkids on a cruise in the Baltic.
Oh, are you?
Yeah.
How cool is that? Man, you guys do the best trips.
Yeah.
Where, where in the Baltic?
Uh, starting in Copenhagen, Copenhagen, Germany, one of the, one of the other countries there. Can't remember whether it's, it's not Poland, it's Latvia, or one of the, not Latvia, there's another one. But anyway, then St. Petersburg for two days, and then Helsinki, Stockholm.
Oh, cool. Wow.
And then back to...
This is his 50th wedding anniversary.
Cool.
With his kids and grandkids, you know, so...
Wow. Yeah.
What a celebration. I hope you stay a while, when you go with it.
Yeah, we'll be gone a total of, we're leaving on the 22nd, back on July the 5th.
That's wonderful.
That's great. Have fun. Yep.
So, where do you leave, New York, or...
Uh, no, we live in Boston.
Oh, good.
Fly from Boston to Munich, and then Munich to, Munich to...
That's wonderful. That'll be fun.
It is.
Quite a change from Morocco.
Yeah. We said for our 50th wedding anniversary, we're going to do something big with the entire family, so...
That's great.
Nice. This is it.
That's really awesome.
Where are you going? Uh, cruise in the Baltic. Oh. We're taking our children and grandchildren, fifteen of us. Big party. So, anyway. All right. Let me go round up the troops. Yep.
I wish we could maybe eliminate the amount that we could take in.
Sometimes you might consider, if you are actually speculating, is Mr. Rector, because over the last 30 years, they don't have a lot of control. They're not as quick as Carl, but, I don't know, just like, it's come up a few times, it's been...
Great. Beautiful. So, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for giving us a few moments worth of time. I'd like to call our meeting back into order at this point. That's going to bring up our next application, which is the shanty at South Beach Street Extension. Mr. Glenn, good evening.
Ah, Mr. Rector, what a pleasure to be here this evening. Pretty straightforward application. I'm taking what was like a dumpster, ancient ivy cooler, my grandfather's, you know, just pour the concrete again on top of whatever's there, and just fill the way. You're, Zach Dusso and I are looking, my business partner from Axmart Energy, we have an island's leading solar company on the island, and we're basically looking to have a showroom to better educate people about solar. We're not changing any of the parking layouts in concern, if that's a concern. We are, you know, sprucing the neighborhood up. It's going to be a, I just put up a huge cedar pergola that we're putting a 30-panel solar array on top of, but the HDC approved unanimously. We have building permits and all that good stuff. So, I actually created two additional parking spaces, though one is under the pergola and one is inside the building, but I don't anticipate of using it very often.
Great.
But I thought you would like to hear that more parking was created for...
That's great.
If it needed to be used in the future, so...
Perfect.
Basically, what we're looking to do is just showcase solar. Our office is upstairs. We really just want to promote renewable energy, so we're going to be selling bicycles, some solar-powered lights, a few other pieces of merchandise, and just generally, you know, using this space as like an opportunity to, for people to visualize and learn a little bit more about renewable technologies.
Great. Excellent. Board members, do you have any questions? Nope, 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 nope. Anything for Andrew Leslie? No. This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this. Seeing no comments at this point?
Move to close the hearing.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Motion made in second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, and the pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Congratulations, sir. Best of luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We're going to try to open on June 25th, so...
Wow.
That's exciting.
We'll see if I'm there, but we'll...
It's a sunny day.
Little plump.
July comes out, but check it out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay. Next thing before us at this point is 4118, Daniel Maynor and Seth Finley on Three Old South Road. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
I'm Seth Finley, Three Old South Road. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things here, as, as I read on the pamphlet here. We're not proposing any outdoor activity with the change-of-use permit on the garage into the personal training studio. We are looking for a curb cut on Old South, which I think is consistent with all the other dwellings on that section of Old South Road. It is commercial residentially zone. If we're, if we're not granted the curb cut for the Old South side, we'd be looking for parking relief on Milestone Lane in the way of moving up that road privet. You can see at the bottom, existing privet, possibly pushing that back, and then we'd be looking for nozzing parking. I think the simplest solution for us would be the curb cut on Old South, and we would have two spaces and the turnaround so that vehicles are not backing out on Old South. It would all be screened with a line of privet in line with what Lindsay Builders, our neighbor, has got already. And I think that's it.
Okay.
Open any questions?
Great. Board members? Any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Which ones, Lindsay? The next one is five, or is it one?
Five.
Five, yeah. At some point in time, it's going to be a multi-use path, a great funnier place on Old South. It's going to happen. It just, it should have already happened.
Like another bike path?
Yes.
Okay.
It should have happened five years ago. These, these parcels here have sort of just been that way for years, the way they are. Sort of people just drive on the front lawn and try to make their own space. I like the idea of Milestone Lane. I mean, I kind of like what you've done over here, with your little drawing. I mean, I don't know what you really want versus what, because we can't, the curb cut, that's DTW for the primary cut, so would that be considered secondary if it was Milestone Lane? And so, so we would be hoping, we just want to know what that...
Right. It, it's, it's essentially one kind of big, long curb cut on Milestone Lane, which is fine.
Right.
And then a normal curb cut out onto Old South Road. We do have to get the materials down. There has to be, you know, it has to be a hard material out onto Old South Road for at least 10 feet.
Yeah.
And then I, I mean, if and when the, the bike path extension comes, I mean, typically then there's a, there's an apron on, into the property on that, too, so...
I'd like to ask, for the proposed curb cut with the two spaces in the front on the Old South side, you guys are saying future bike path there, how, how far in is the town's easement on the proposed future bike path?
Sixty?
Go ahead, Andrew.
Sixty-foot layout on Old South Road. I mean, that's all I, the only reason I brought that up is because it's, we haven't had anything here for a while, so it's definitely going to happen at some point. Right.
Holly, could you pull the aerial back? I think that shows it.
It's a very old, old shot there.
So, the...
Just talking about the layout.
There, what is that sandy, like, where the, I mean, that, that is a pretty...
Yeah, it's all sand.
Yeah.
Right.
So, that...
Ruts from the mail trucks and every other vehicle that pulls over there.
Right. So, there's probably about a 20-foot shoulder there. So, the, so the bike path would go in, in the middle of that, so probably would be, it's, the bike path would be 10 feet wide, so it's, you know, probably at least five feet off Old South Road, five feet from the property line.
In the plan that we showed earlier, the proposed line of privet would go, you can see, oh, actually, would you mind going back to the satellite view? The privet, we were thinking would go horizontally along with Old South Road, but kind of in line with the end of the footpath on the front of the primary dwelling there. So, I think, I think it would be ample room for the bike path. There's a significant amount of front yard there.
And, Mr. Chairman, can I just be clear that the, the privet has to be within your property?
Right.
So, you can't extend that out into the public road anyway? But I agree with you, there's enough, there's plenty of room for it to be there. It's just that all your parking spaces need to be within the lot lines that are showed.
Right.
But, but again, I, from the scale of your drawing, it looks like all of that will work.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may. I'd just like to also point out, I'm, I'm not opposed to the, the, what, what you're looking to get approved. I do have to say, I'm a little concerned later on with what we're doing on Old South Road and the traffic in the roundabouts and the future expansion of the rotary, if it does and when it does take place, potentially with their divider that was talked about. There's a lot of things that are going to be taking effect in the future, and I, I really like the milestone alternative, because that is a road less traveled, you know, I think it's, for safety reasons, it's self-explanatory, but I think in the future with the curb cut on that Old South, you might be getting into some problems later on. Bike path, traffic, future development of that road, and I think you're, you're really better off on the milestone, and that's just my personal opinion.
Right. I guess, I guess counterpoint that, there was a letter that had gone out to the neighbors, and only one neighbor had any opposition whatsoever. So, some of the neighbors said they didn't want the additional traffic, not some of the neighbors, that one neighbor in particular.
Yeah.
So, that's, that would be our reasoning for leaning away from the milestone road.
Is that neighbor here today to speak in objection to...
No, I don't believe so.
We also have a bunch of letters of support from other neighbors.
So, I'm more inclined to take your side right now with the suggestion.
Right.
Yeah. Go ahead.
This is, this is the problem with you. Milestone Lane's a secret little road that's been there forever that people are going to say, oh, no, look at all the traffic we're going to have, you know, like they used to say about First Way 10 years ago. So, my, I think, I mean, from where, it's not, okay, I'm just going to say this to you, you guys are doing a great job not having representation.
Thank you.
You don't have, this is a nice little drawing, it's, I like it, but if everybody came in with this, we would be continuing every hearing. So, I think, I think the best thing to do is to, I don't have an issue with... Bike path, traffic, future development of that road, and I think you're really better off on the milestone, and that's just my personal opinion.
Right. I guess counterpoint that, there was a letter that had gone out to the neighbors and only one neighbor had any opposition whatsoever. So some of the neighbors said they didn't want the additional traffic, not some of the neighbors, that one neighbor in particular.
Yeah.
So that's, that would be our reasoning for leaning away from the milestone road.
Is that neighbor here today to speak in objection here as well?
We also have a bunch of letters of support from other neighbors.
So I'm more inclined to take your side right now with the suggestion.
Right.
Yeah. Go ahead.
This is the problem. Milestone Lane's a secret little road that's been there forever that people are gonna say, oh, no, look at all the traffic we're gonna have, you know, like they used to say about First Way 10 years ago. So my, I think, I mean, from where, it's not, okay, I'm just gonna say this to you, you guys are doing a great job not having representation.
Thank you.
You don't have, this is a nice little drawing, it's, I like it, but if everybody came in with this, we would be continuing every hearing. So I think, I think the best thing to do is to, I don't have an issue with keeping your access on Old South Road, but I do think there needs to be some parking in the, on the milestone lane, but not necessarily, I don't know how you could separate your business potential versus the primary residence. That's more, so my little question. Like, the primary residence has been sort of operating as is for a long, long time, right?
Right.
And...
Mr. Roll, a minute. I reside at the primary residence, and Seth, my neighbor, and I get along very well.
I had no idea, Toby. How do I know?
No, that's the beauty of Nantucket. We all live in little places and we don't know, but, you know, Seth and I get along very well, and we aim to work cordially with our neighbor and the property owner to continue to rent the facility and use it well, so that's not an issue for us.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to look at it from a perspective of adding vehicles, where people think the back, the back is better, quiet, safe, as was mentioned. Backing out into Old South Road is certainly not what this board...
Right.
Or anybody, you know, five years from now would be saying, what are we doing backing out into Old South Road? Same time, right now, as it currently sits, you just sort of pull in and sort of make it work. But if it's a formalized screening and an actual driveway versus sort of a free-for-all, it becomes harder to turn around. So I'm just saying, I see you have the onsite turnaround proposed, and I'm, and I'm fine with that too, as long as this all lays outright, you know, from what you've got drawn there versus a professional surveyor drawing this with the, with the actual survey, the actual property lines, the actual layout of the road for the town. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
It's okay what you're doing, I just wanna make sure that it's accurate, I guess.
I understand.
I just, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please, correct.
The two spaces that would access from Old South Road, are those primarily gonna be designated for the dwelling units as opposed to the business?
Yes.
So there'd be less coming in and out than there would be on the business side?
Also, as far as the business, I'm not particularly concerned about traffic. It's a personal training facility, so for the most part, it will be one-on-one.
Right.
You know, I put in the plan up to six people maximum, but that would be at the very, the highest level of people in there. So I don't actually think traffic is, is gonna be a huge concern. There may be one car.
Okay.
But we've provided the spaces just for navigation.
Anyone else? Yeah?
Mayor?
So it, excuse me, so it looks from the, when you marry the sketch drawing and the plot plan you provided, that you're gonna have approximately 32 feet on the pull-off portion of the driveway from Old South Road. The distance from the, from the property line to the house is 32 feet, and then you've got another 30, you've got another 60 feet for a turnaround space. So it looks like you have ample room for a pull-in turnaround from Old South, and then perhaps you can make up the extra parking spaces that staff indicate would be required on the milestone roadside.
Milestone Lane.
Milestone Lane, sorry, yeah. Totally different.
It's okay.
But I just wanted to clarify, that's, that's what you're thinking?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Okay.
Andrew Leslie, anything? Go ahead.
We had suggested in the staff report, an alternative to the layout on Milestone Lane to head-in parking spaces. I mean, it seems like that might function a little bit better, maybe a bit more presentable than having, you know, parking going different directions with two head-in and then two parallel along the road.
Yeah, we'd be very open to that.
Okay.
There's a line of privet there now. Just moving it back a bit.
Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this? Yeah, thumbs up. Okay. Board members, so it sounds like they're gonna do head-in parking up in the milestone, and then those two spaces up front, which has a turnaround on it. And if you're all good with that, what would you like to do at this point? Got a public hearing to deal with?
Close, move to close the hearing.
Thank you. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously and the pleasure of the board.
Thank you so much.
Well, we're not quite done. Almost. This is, this is the big hurdle.
Move to approve the, this plan here.
Yep. And with the head-in parking?
With the, with the corner, yeah.
Yeah.
The, what did you call it?
Milestone Road.
The Milestone Lane parking?
Yeah.
Solution.
Okay.
With the turnaround on site, head-in. The head-in on Milestone Lane.
Yep. Do I hear a second to that?
A second.
Discussion on the issue, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Thank you. Good luck.
Great. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. That brings us to 4218 United Parcel Service. Mr. Blackwell, good evening.
Jeff Blackwell for the applicant and Luis Montalvo, who is an engineer with UPS.
Yeah, thank you.
The application is to amend an existing MCD special permit that was granted in 1990, which 1990, if my history is correct, predates the existence of the internet, and there's been, there's been an explosion in the package delivery system businesses because of internet ordering. So we're here to look for an amendment to make the site and the structures and traffic flow that serve this site more conducive to the much greater volume of package delivery here in 2018. The two major elements of the amendment are an expansion of the structure, the existing structure, by 1,141 square feet, and the creation of a exit curb cut at the easterly end of the site onto Old South Road. The existing access, which was approved under the previous MCD, will be maintained. All trucks will enter as they do now, but with the placement of the main trailer delivery truck from the ferry all the way to the east side, a different method of exiting the site is required. And you can see the dark shading to the upper right-hand corner of the leased parcel is the proposed exit driveway. If you have any questions, we'll try to address those. We don't have a review by Ed Pesci yet, so it's not a matter that will be settled tonight.
Okay. Great. Board members, any questions that you have? No?
I just have, the lot line that we see on the aerial or on the GIS, is that inaccurate?
Probably.
It looks like it is. Compared to your drawing.
There can be some variation with property lines on the GIS, but these are lease boundaries, which, you know, the GIS director would have even less guidance on, so...
All right. So the ownership part is separate from what you can use, because it goes right into the old KPF thing there.
Right. This is a parcel that's been leased from the town in Nantucket through the Memorial Airport for many years.
Okay.
I don't have any issues.
Andrew Leslie, anything that you have? Just the screening thing, maybe?
Well, we added the screening thing, but I wasn't really sure if this is the area where that berm is.
It is.
So it may not be necessary at all.
Okay.
Yeah. They had that big hump in the front there.
This is, the, a landscape plan was approved by the planning board in 1990, and the screening is not in conformance with that plan. There's no doubt that, well, there's two elements that we know that we need to address on a future submission before the July meeting, and that is an enhanced screening landscape plan and also a lighting plan for the exterior lighting fixtures on the building. So we will be submitting a landscape plan before the July meeting.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I mean, those, both of those things are pretty minor, and most of the site improvements are already there, so if the board wanted to close the hearing with the condition that the final plan include those, we would be comfortable with that.
Yeah.
And...
Go ahead.
What about the engineering workup? Is there, you said that Mr. Pesci hasn't yet looked at this, is, would that...
We can respond perhaps entirely to the board's satisfaction to Mr. Pesci's comments or suggestions.
Okay. So I understand, so that could be additional proviso?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this? Seeing no one?
Move to close the hearing.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously and the pleasure of the board.
Move to approve, subject to landscape lighting and engineering review and any necessary changes.
Perfect. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Fantastic. Let's see unanimous by the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So next three applications that are gonna come up are gonna be John Keane and Carolyn Do you want to take these separately? Do you want to take them together since they're all kind of a common theme issue? Any thoughts here? Take them separate?
I would suggest separate.
All right.
Because each property is a little...
I know, each one's a little different too. Okay. So first thing before us is gonna be Six Oak Street. Mr. Keane, good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. John Keane, for the record. We're here basically to try and clarify our licenses that have been in existence. We had special permits, but the zoning got changed, and basically, we are working off of the COI instead of a COO as far as capacities are concerned, and we're trying to get the board to memorize our actual number of people that we are allowed to have in the building without referring to seating. It's a square footage calculation of the building. So I guess, any questions?
Okay. Board members, anything you want to ask?
I wanted to ask staff if they would comment on this because I know there was controversy about restaurants and seating and occupancy sites, so just a bit of how that's been resolved.
All right. So a lot of the restaurants had permits that were tied to parking requirements, so somehow the actual building occupancy numbers and the maximum number of seats, which were a zoning issue, somehow got intermingled, and now, you know, their occupancy numbers are not reflecting actual building occupancy, but they're tied to some zoning issue that in many cases isn't even an issue anymore. So like in the downtown, there used to be a parking requirement for the number of seats in a restaurant. That's been removed. So some of the restaurants, and John is not the first to come in, the owners have come in and said, you know, can you now take out the seat reference in my permit so I can get that removed from my other documents?
There's a reference to an interdepartmental working group on this, so has there been input from the fire department and things like that? I just think how you have people packed into spaces often raises that kind of question.
So it's all completely dependent on the building code and to some extent the fire codes. Building and fire work together to do the certificate of inspections each year. They both go out to check for fire safety and other building code requirements. So, you know, we've all been working together to try to straighten this out for the business owners, and in some cases, the first step is for them to come in and have that seating number taken out of their special permit, and to have the special permit actually reflect the true building occupancy number.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this? Hearing no comment at this point. What would you like to do, board members?
Close this one. This is a public hearing.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously and the pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve the changes in the language, removing the seating and establishing the number of actual occupants. Is that good, Leslie? Okay.
All right.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
Would the board, sorry, sorry about that. Would the board like to discuss the numbers? And remember, on the record?
Go ahead. Leslie, I think we're good here.
Yeah, I think we'll just put the number in the decision because the number's the number. It's not really up for negotiation.
Right. It's not a decision on that.
Sorry about that.
No, don't worry about it. That's okay. No. Better to ask now. All right. So that's gonna bring us to 4 East Chestnut Street, same applicant, and same basic thing, right, John?
Very same thing. The 4 East Chestnut does have an apartment that has a restriction on it for a number of people, and that's basic, that's basically, yes.
Okay. So, board members, do you have any questions on this one?
Isn't there additional stuff, though, about changing reference to dormitory management and employee residency? Am I looking through it?
Sorry, I'm talking around.
That's the next one.
That'll be the next one.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Nope. All right. So nothing from the board, nothing from staff. Anyone in the audience? Seeing no comments again.
I'll make a motion to close it, the hearing.
Got it.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously and the pleasure of the board.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
And do I hear a second to that? Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Okay, here we go. So that's gonna bring us to 4 West Creek, same applicant, again for Kitty Murdochs. So, go ahead, Judith, unless you want to proceed with anything?
No, I just was looking at the wrong file, sir.
And 4 East Chestnut, 4 West Creek, sorry.
That's okay.
Is, it's a different kettle of fish. It does have parking requirements and loading zone requirements, et cetera, and there are a couple of references made to an old decision that was made. When we changed, when the building department changed over to the COI with seating and capacities, our permits changed. All that we wanna do is have what is granted on the permit right now, the COI, as being endorsed, and then secondly, we wanna clarify that one of the conditions of the previous permit was that we don't have trees ever gave feet along the side of the street closest to Orange Street. We actually planted trees that were four feet apart and that were evergreen rather than being ones that shed and didn't provide any shelter to our neighbor during the winter. So we just wanted, the reason that clause is in there is just to identify that, and that's something that we will maintain, and the neighbor is quite happy with.
Okay.
And then the other thing is the dormitory use. We'd like to get rid of, not be restricted to the property from being a dormitory and just have it as a residence.
Okay. All right. Board members, any other questions at this point that you have? And did, I understand you weren't gonna pursue the patio, correct?
Not, not at this time.
Okay, great. Just so I'm clear.
And John, you're okay with the restriction to employee use for the units?
We'd like to get rid of the restriction completely and just leave it as a residence. There's no way that anybody would really ever use it as something other than, and nobody has it.
Right.
Nobody's gonna wanna give over a bar.
Right. Exactly. I'm just, well, staff has that in there. I'm just asking.
But just to have the permit be as simple as possible.
That's fine.
Yeah. I hear Leslie saying that that would work.
All right.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience wishing to comment? Seeing no comments, the pleasure of the board at this point.
Make a motion to close.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, and the pleasure of the board, the application.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes made in the language as written.
Good.
Staff has that.
Does that mean taking out the restriction to employee use?
Yeah, all those... They have that written down, all that stuff.
Thanks. Second.
All right, so that motion's now made, seconded, discussion on that issue. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, and thank you very much, Mr. Keane.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys, appreciate it.
Is there any other business to come before the board at this point? Mr. Borchert?
This is it, this is my last meeting, and it's been a great run. And I'd like to thank all the board members, past and present. I'd like to thank the staff sitting here for all your hard work. My Linda. And I'd like to thank all the attorneys and all the members of the public, who have been so educational. And I've tried to listen to everybody regardless of our differences. And keep up the good work, and it's been a great run.
And all I want to say is thank you, Carl, for your service on the board. It is greatly appreciated, and you will be missed, so...
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks. Anyone else? All right. Unless you want to hang out for a while, or, you know, be creative, take a motion to... There we go, thank you all.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it, have a good night.
Okay, got it. Got it.
It's right. It's right.
Okay. Write that all down.
Sure. I was hoping to maybe set up a meeting with her, with Mike, and to talk and... Would you like to be part of it, or what do you think? I just thought it had a lot of promise, I didn't think it was perfect, but... That's what I... And it's the tree. It's like the tree is center, which is really quite good, so... Do you think that the... Do you think that the school people would be more open to that than...
Well, when you're driving, because I... Maybe there's an opportunity over here to create some additional parking. And even in the front, I don't think they're gonna be wild, because the parking overflow's there quite good. Because on this side, there's not a lot going on.
Well, that's what Mary's suggestion was, that that could be a possibility and that might offset it. And my impression is the school buses aren't out there in front anyway, that's employee parking, right? So I thought her insight about just the connectivity with how roads feeds in and stuff really made a lot of sense.
In a way, it's sort of, it gets to all the roads, so it's very interesting.
Well, I've also noticed just on the community bulletin board on Facebook, people being anxious about whether this is a done deal, however it gets presented to them, and I don't know. It just seems to me if there's a couple of different ideas and if it can be presented in a fresh look with... I think she really, she's been mean, and she's... I heard sort of apply for some town boards and... She's so thoughtful about stuff, so I hope she will.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll get in touch with Mike. It'd be next week's meeting, right?
Well, we're meeting, I know, at least at the staff level with the school, and I might...
Do, give it a try.
Just get it out there.
Yep.
You know, they're... We'll see.
Well, they've had their own interesting times with the shutdown, too, so maybe they're a little more loose-jointed or at least understanding.
Yeah. So thank you for that.